Okay, it is ten o'clock. We're gonna start our morning workshop with the Clickatuck County Board of Commissioners with Acting Public Works Director, Mr. Jeff, go ahead.
Okay, we have a few things on your consent agenda today. Item eight is concurrence to award our small works contractor contract to On Call Electrical Services. We do this every year. Coalburn Electric was the lowest bidder. It varies from year to year. It seems like we get them three or four years in a row and then it changes. So we're on our kind of third or fourth year, I think, with Coalburn now. And notice for the planned county force work, this is a statutory requirement. We have to do this every year. We have to tell what we're planning to do. We have to put an ad in the paper and we also have to tell what we did at the following year. So there'll be another thing where we tell what we did in twenty-two using our own county forces.
Question on that one. Can you add to it? I know we can spend whatever it is. I got the sheet nine hundred thousand dollars or something and this project is seven fifty of that. If you come up with sidewalks later, can you add to it if you didn't publicize it at the beginning of the year?
Yeah, you could still add to it because at the end, I mean, you do it.
It just can't be over.
Right. It can't be over. And what you guys agreed to when the budget originally is what we put out. Because that's the actual plan. If something comes up, that's completely different. You are correct. Resolution, no matter of reviewing and extending the rates, this is another statutory thing we do. You'll see a lot of those coming in at this time of the year. We have to review our equipment rates every year. Some years we change them. This year, we just updated them last year, so we didn't see any need to change them. This year, they looked fine. Various resolutions in the matter of county roads. These are projects that were approved. We had to do CRP resolutions to spend money. And then we have a Wash Dot Local Agency Supplement Agreement for Rock Creek Bridge. I'll turn it over as a scroll.
So the CRP resolutions are established, it's your guys' intent to establish them as projects. That gives us the right to move forward with the work on those is our engineering team. The construction funding request, item sixteen, that is requesting the construction funding on that project. We should have the remaining, or two of the remaining three safety projects reviewed this week and we should be getting those to you guys for consent agenda next week. So as soon as we, if you guys approve the supplement this afternoon, it'll go to the state for their final review and an agreement to go to add as well as the plans for that project. That would be that step six C that we talked about in my little presentation last week. So three to six weeks, hopefully we get approval to go out to add on that project. Let's see, this past December, our consultant completed our annual bridge inspections for twenty-two. No new issues were brought forward. They also completed a federal requirement to update our bridge load ratings for the new special haul vehicles that are out there. No new postings were recommended luckily, so all our bridges are good for that. And I'll make sure to get you guys a copy of my bridge report for twenty-two here before the end of this month when it's completed. Designers are continuing work on the preliminary alignments on Sundale and Old Eight and starting the permitting on that project as well. And we're working on various permitting for other projects out there. We've got the Bickleton area paving project coming up, so they'll be applying for our permits on that as well as other maintenance projects that come up.
Do we, and I don't know if this is a good time to ask, or where are we at with the Roosevelt grade core drilling? Have we found out how much of that is gonna need to be redone yet?
We have a pretty good idea. We've given them an opportunity to do their own, their own study until they have till February first. I wrote them a letter back in December. But we have, we have the area already outlined where they need to, where they would need to replace the asphalt.
Still mainly the lower portion?
Yes, still lower portion. The upper portion is in, is in good shape. Okay, maintenance, what the maintenance crews are doing on the east end, they're brushing in the Golden Dale area. They're grading and clearing mud off the roads in Bickleton area. We're grading where it's starting to, there we're getting some wind. It's a little drier, so we're able to get out there and do some work. Or actually do some grading. I went out and drove the roads with the supervisor last week so I could get my own eyes on it. Some areas in Centerville, it's a little bit, it's not, it's still gonna take a little for those to harden up and where we can actually grade. White Salmon, we're brushing, patching holes. We've had some holes pop up on the west end with cold mix and ditching when we can. We're gonna start doing that when we get, when time allows. Okay, this building. We're going through the punch list. We still have a few items left. They're chipping away at it. We're trying to get them to come in, but that's just how these work out. And I have a list, they're like removing glue from the carpet in office thirty-one oh two. Rubber base that needs to be glued back on at thirty-one oh one. You know, finishing conditions on doors, window jams. There's, you know, a few odds and ends that they could probably, if they just came back, could get them with a couple guys, they could get them done in a couple days, but again, that's, takes a little while and so we'll get through it. HVAC systems, we have estimates from the HVAC contractor for this building, for all the areas but one. And that's the, over the break rooms on the other end of the hall, on the third floor, the other end. So we're waiting to hear from them, then we're gonna ask, we're gonna ask other companies for estimates. Let's see, the other stuff is pretty much there. I wanted to give you an update on Juvenile and Courthouse Break Room and Conference Room. Juvenile is scheduled to be completed and moved in by probably mid-April. And the courthouse and break room, or courthouse break room, conference room, that actually the storage room is complete and courts are using it. And the rest of the project scheduled to be done about the second week of March. Again, we don't take, we don't, we don't get the cabinets until the first week in February. And then soon as we, we put the cabinets in, mainly the countertops, then they'll come in. The people, the people building the countertops will come in, measure them and weigh them out, then they gotta go back because we're at their mercy. It isn't our people, it's other third-party contractors. Sadist Pass Consultants drafting the last contract, which is the contract to bring in the equipment that we have and to fire up the system. And then we'll have all the contracts in place. Other issues. Jeff Renaud from the airport has talked to me over the past couple of times about, could we help him out? Did we have a plow? And we actually have a plow, old thing, but it will work on their truck. That's been sitting there and what we're suggesting is, is, you know, take the whole thing, the mounting bracket and everything, if it's okay with you guys. And what we would do is charge them for this, what we would get for scrap. Because essentially, that's all, that's all it's worth. If anybody was to buy it on a surplus, you'd probably get less than scrap. But that's what we would do, scrap. If you guys are okay with that, then we'll.
This is an old plow we haven't used in how long?
It's probably ten years old. I mean, it's older than ten, but we haven't probably used it in ten years.
I'm fine with it. How about you guys?
No, I think it's good.
I'll bring you a price, what it will be next week. It shouldn't be much, whatever, scrap isn't that great right now, so. Okay, and I stand corrected. I looked at the list. And we are installing the water bottle filler this year.
Is it in the break room or in the hallway?
In the break room, we're putting in a filter, but there will be a water bottle filter over by the, over by the drinking fountain. So there'll be two. Well, the other one's just a filter. You fill out of the sink. It's not special.
It's not like this thing over here, which we're gonna end up being mandated to do next to every drinking fountain, so. I just wanted to make sure we didn't put one of these in the break room and then I'd turn around next year and put one in the hallway too.
No, you are correct. We'll put one in the hallway this year. And then a quick update on the charging stations. There's a flat rate fee for a dollar when you plug them in. The first four hours are free. Then after that, it's a dollar an hour, but that is just to actually use it. Then you're charged twenty-five cents a kilowatt hour. And there, ten percent of that goes to the contractor, which is charging point. And we get the rest and they're figuring out, I haven't heard yet, finance people haven't got it all calculated, but we have, we've received checks. Summer is much better. Winter is, as you can see, there's nobody plugged in hardly, but summer we get a lot of tourist activity. We're the only charging station in the area, so.
Do we have any idea yet on whether that's gonna be cost sustainable without taxpayer subsidy on the use? Or do we know yet?
We don't know yet. We should have a pretty, we'll take a look at it. Again, summer's very good.
They need a good year or so to figure it out.
Yes, we do. But they, so far, the contractor hasn't, hasn't threatened to pull it out or anything and it's their system. I mean, you know, they maintain it and run it and stuff for us. And they take ten percent, so it's not too bad. I think that's all we have. Unless you got something, Seth?
Questions from either of my seatmates?
Not for me, I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one. Do you have any update on timeline for the Dallas Port wastewater rate increase?
I will bring an estimate to you Thursday, the Thursday workshop next week. And a couple different options for you guys to make a decision on.
Perfect. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. We have the sheriff at ten-twenty, so we have about eight minutes to kill. If anybody has anything for good order. Not hearing anything. I will jump in real quick with a bait. That was a bait that I was talking to earlier about the fireworks show, the demolition derby that they plan on doing on the Fourth of July at the fairgrounds. He came in earlier asking for a waiver of the fees for use of the fairgrounds. So I explained to him that we can't waive in advance. We have to wait until he gets the bill and then we can waive the bill if we so choose. So that might be an ask that comes back later. They've got eighteen thousand from us and thirteen thousand from the city of Goldendale to do the demolition derby and fireworks show and so, yeah, I know they got big plans out there for that and I personally look forward to being in my community. It's kinda neat. But I told him I'd give you guys an update, so that's the update on that one.
Thank you.
Have either of you read Bill twelve sixteen? It was in the email today. It's House Bill twelve sixteen. On, it's, it's long and it's getting referred to the committee in the environment, but it is relating to clean energy siting. And what the, and it's a governor's request legislation.
I started reading it last week. I haven't gone through it. I started reading it again this morning. But.
And the reason I bring it up is twelve sixteen. It shows up as concerns medium. I don't know if.
I will. When was the testimony day on that, did it say?
Go back to. First reading referred to the energy, the scheduled for public hearing in the House Committee in the Environment, eight AM on January nineteenth.
Yeah, that's the WASAC day, so I'm assuming.
You guys might be there.
There, there might be testimony, so if you guys had input, it'd be nice to know. I haven't read the whole thing yet, unfortunately. I can speculate, but I won't till I read the whole thing. I believe this is the, one of the many of the governor streamlining and giving more power to EFSEC.
So this doesn't actually give, it creates an inter-agency clean siting coordinating council. And then, what was the other one that's massive on it? It creates clean energy projects of statewide significance and clean energy coordinated permitting process. So it creates kinda like with ecology, there's the JARPA permit. That's the Joint Aquatics Resources Permit. And so this is going to create something that's JARPA-ish through the state, through all the state permitting. So, yeah, I think it will have an impact on stuff that goes through EFSEC. I don't, but it's not specific, you know, it's not tied to EFSEC.
What I was kind of reading through it was that it's, it's almost like they're gonna set a committee to do some entry level planning with the tribes and communities to find out where it would be a good look. Essentially, it almost sounds like they're kinda trying to build their own EOZ.
So that was the other one. They, one of the other goals in here is by twenty-five to do programmatic EIS for everything within the Columbia Basin. And so in essence, that was, it's not the EOZ, but it's the, the EIS behind it.
Right.
I would, I would be interested to know if there will be testimony from the Association of Counties when you're going up.
Yeah, I don't know that we'll know until that night or normally it's the night before, but that night before is a a meet and greet. It's like a new member orientation with lobbyists and staffers and some legislators, legislators if they decide to show up. So we won't have that two-hour workshop beforehand to get plugged in. I'm sure this won't be the only time to testify on this bill. We'll see it over and over again for the next weeks, but I, yeah, I don't know if it's on their agenda. And then I guess we can go through testimony. Actually, that's a good time to bring that up. By all means, if you see anything on a bill that you wanna testify on, there's two ways to do that. You can either testify on behalf of the county, speaking for the county. And to do that, you need to get board permission first, so that we're on board and we all agree with your position on a certain bill. Then you can, when you testify, you can say you're speaking for the county. If you haven't already gotten permission from your seatmates to testify, including like this bill on Thursday, unless I'm testifying on behalf of WASAC, then make sure when you testify that you say that you're speaking for yourself. Just to make sure you keep that difference in there, but more than one of us can testify on a bill. So if you see something you wanna testify on, most of the time you can go to their website and you can click on that bill and you can sign up to testify via online. And if we need to spend some time to walk you through that process later, we can.
That would be good. Thank you.
So the other one that's major in this is the lease conflict pump storage siting process.
You have a bill number on that one too?
This is, this is part of that same bill. I mean, it's a massive bill with, I mean, huge repercussions, but.
Yeah, I think what they're trying to do is be able to deem energy, green energy projects as a state of emergency and a project of statewide significance that allows them to fast-track and bypass concerns like pump storage. All the tribes are concerned about that one and if they make it a project of statewide significance and they can't hit their green energy goals without it, then they'll be able to mitigate those concerns a little easier is what I think is.
So the pump storage project, I believe, has already been deemed a project of statewide significance.
But I think they're gonna deem all green energy projects. I think that's what this is laying the foundation for.
At least all the big ones.
Right.
Okay, that was my, I just wanted to make, make sure both my seatmates were aware of it and to read it and.
Yep. Remind me later when we get some board pending and we'll show our new seatmate how to look those up and how to testify on them and all that stuff. Ten-twenty. Next update, Mr. Sheriff Bob Songer. That seems two pronouns, Mr. Sheriff. Yeah, one or the other, I guess, huh?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
If it's okay with the board, I would like to introduce Deputy K-9 Officer and Profi. I don't know, I think most of you have met Profi before. But I'd like to have Adam give up an update on the academy he just went through and with the status as a Profi at this point, if that's okay.
It is. Can we have you pull that mic closer to you so everybody can?
Is that better?
Oh, yeah, way better.
Okay.
If you can hear yourself out of the speaker, everybody else.
So I'm Deputy Adam Diamond, the new K-9 Officer, the sheriff's office. I think while we already introduced Profi, I think most of you have met him since then. So I just completed the academy two months in Tumwater, Washington, Rochester. Profi did excellent. I'm his second handler, as most of you probably know. That's most of it. He'll be able to do all the duties he had before as far as tracking suspects or lost individuals, protection work for me and apprehension suspects and evidence location. Suspects ditch evidence on their run through the woods. He can actually help me locate all that.
He's a little excited.
He's excited this morning. He thinks we're training, but.
Did you learn how to speak German or whatever language he speaks?
So, yeah, his is actually Flemish. Yeah, so. Yeah, just a, just a handful of his commands, so. It's, it was a lot. It was, it's like drinking from a fire hose as far as training and knowledge goes, but great, great training, great opportunity. He's, he's an amazing dog. He really is. In fact, I spoke to a couple of people from the Vancouver BD area and they were actually saying, they kinda tongue-in-cheek. We were kinda hoping it wouldn't work out, so we could buy him off of. He's that good. No, he's better than me, so I'm pretty lucky.
Yeah, I don't know Flemish, but.
Do you wanna walk him over so they can see him?
Yeah.
As long as you don't train him to sniff her doughnuts, we're fine.
No, he doesn't go for sweets, so it's just me, fortunately. I don't have to fight him for that, but. So, yeah, here he is. He's about seventy-five to eighty pounds and a day.
Belgian Malara, right?
Shepherd Malcross. Yeah, Shepherd Malcross, so half shepherd, half not.
He's like, give me the tug, dad.
That's what he's after.
I know.
That's pretty much what I've got going on. Looking, hoping to use him, you know, for.
How, how old is he?
He's about five years old.
Did we get the castle moved to your?
They're still working on that. Last I knew, Public Works was waiting until the rain receded a little bit, just so they're not.
Destroying the property.
Yeah, it's pretty soft everywhere right now, so.
Probably next week. Next week.
Okay. How's your family taking to the new addition?
Oh, they love him. They love him. He's, he's great when he's at home. He's really chill, really mellow. This is actually pretty, pretty.
Yeah.
But, yeah, he's, he's really chill, really mellow. He just hangs out, does his thing. He's social. He lets everybody at him and all that follows me around like my shadow. So that's always.
Which is good, though.
Yeah, that's, that's what he's supposed to do.
Right.
Gets along great with my other dogs. He's incredibly smart. I know I've had dogs that I've thought were smart before. He's, he's miles ahead of me.
All right. Well, thank you, sir, and thank you, Pooch.
Yep.
Might add that when we, when, yeah, thanks, Adam. When we first got Profi, again, we feel very proud of the fact that the citizens donated the money to purchase this dog. But when we first got him from over in Europe, we swore him in as a deputy sheriff and also swore him in as a citizen of the United States, so. Carries with him a lot of qualifications.
If you can only get him to vote, we'd be fine.
Well, we're working on that. Just to give you an update, there were a total of two-hundred-and-six calls for service from January first to the January seventeenth. And in addition to the calls for service, deputies served a total, total of forty-one civil papers during the same time period. On December seventh at one PM, we had a meeting with the various timber companies and members of the Cattlemen's Association at Camp Draper in Glenwood, Washington. This meeting is in regards to the Range Timber Deputy Contract. As a result of the meeting, there was an interest by the timber companies and Cattlemen's Association members to continue the Range Timber Deputy Program and their willingness to pay into the program. Chief Civil Deputy Karen Ings will provide board members with a report on that here shortly. The other item I wanted to cover on December fourteenth, I attended an informational training put on by the Washington State Wildlife Department representatives and at the Goldendale Grange from eight AM to three-thirty PM. Subject matter was livestock and wolves. A guide on non-lethal tools and methods to do, reduce conflicts. Interesting meeting. This training is in response to the Washington State Wildlife Department and the Federal Wildlife Agency introducing wolves in Clickatuck County. The wolves they introduced into Clickatuck County are federally protected. This is a real concern for people who raise livestock in our county and it is also a public safety concern. And of course, there are still meetings going on and so forth in regard to that matter. However, it appears citizens of Clickatuck, Clickatuck County have no say in regards to wolves being introduced into our county. Being done by the federal government, apparently we have no say in that. Item four is very interesting and it's gonna be a very hot subject coming up and the I did, copied the letter into this report. This letter was put out by the Washington State Sheriff's Association dated January eleventh, twenty-twenty-three, and it is as follows. Governor Jay Enjly has announced plans for significant new restrictions on the ownership of firearms by law-abiding Washingtonians. We, members of the Washington Sheriffs, believe the proposed restrictions will serve to erode constitutionally protective rights without addressing the root cause of violent crime. We are particularly concerned with the proposed so-called assault weapon ban and the permit to purchase laws. The members of the Washington State Sheriff's Association are responsible for two essential tasks. The first is to protect life and property by enforcing criminal laws. The second is to uphold and protect guaranteed rights. We take both responsibilities very seriously. Restrictions that shift focus from offenders to law-abiding citizens send the wrong message and erodes constitutional guarantees upheld by the United States Supreme Court. Magazine bans, like the one passed by Washington Legislature last year, have already been ruled unconstitutional by the United States Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals and mandated annual background checks to process firearms, to possess firearms are also under challenge. The governor's proposed legislation is also. The governor's proposed legislation is also inconsistent with Article One, Section twenty-four of the Washington State Constitution. Which mirrors the language of the First Federal Second Amendment. The new proposal to restrict gun ownership would further infringe on the rights that have been clearly and repeatedly established. Like the citizens of Washington State who elected us, we too are concerned with the troubling growth of violent crime. The most effective path to addressing the root of the problem lies in addressing the misguided desire to take human life. We want to find ways to reduce crime and protect life and property. We believe the greatest focus on dealing with offenders, especially repeat offenders, is the approach we need to take. But this effort should not involve a weakening of the rights of all citizens in the process. The ri- the rise in violent crime that so concerns citizens has happened even as regulations and restrictions on firearm ownership have grown. Of course, this is because the people who commit violent crimes simply don't concern themselves with obeying rules about guns. The people in, uh, impacted by restrictions to constitutional rights are those who obey the laws in the first place. The people who we know aren't the problem. We know violent crime is a complex problem and with many sources. But narrow solutions that diminish the rights of law-abiding people aren't the right solutions. The Washington State Sheriff's Association is committed to working with Governor Inslee and the state legislators. To strengthen our criminal justice system and reduce violent crime. To do so is an essential to our mission, but our mission also involves the safeguarding of rights. We view both as central to what we represent. And this was authored by Clay Myers, Kidataz County Sheriff, President of the Washington Sheriff's Association. And there's a number of sheriffs that have done press releases, and I will be doing a press release probably within the next week or so. The Sentinel, I gave them a copy of this letter, they're gonna, should be in the paper this coming week. This is a concern. I don't know of any other amendment in the Constitution, whether it's the United States Constitution. Or whether it's the Washington State Constitution, if this passes, you would be required to get a permit to exercise your Second Amendment Constitution. Under the Constitution. I don't know of any other amendment where you have to get a permit to exercise that. So it's, it is a concern, there's going to be numbers of challenges, of course, probably from the N R A, Second Amendment Foundation, and citizens. And where they really go after, this is under Senate Bill. The assault ban is under Senate Bill fifty-one ninety-three, and the House Bill eleven forty-three requires you to get a permit to buy any firearm, period. And annual background checks of even, though you might not have bought a gun, but you have a gun, they want to do annual background checks. In my humble opinion, as your elected sheriff, this clearly violates the Constitution, in my opinion. And as your sheriff, I will not enforce that. If that law passes the way it's presented, I will not enforce it. I believe it violates people's rights, and I think we all, who have taken an oath of office, we all need to stand up for the people's rights. Especially when they go to this extent. And uh, anyway, I could go on, and I'll get off my stump, but uh, it is a real concern. And so I'll refer to Under Sheriff Carmen Knops, uh, for her activity report on patrol and jail. And then to Karen on her uh, report as well, on budget and so forth. Do any of you have any questions in regards to what I've said so far?
I really like uh, that you shared this letter with us from the other sheriff. And um, I think each county, if they had their stance. But you had deliverables or how, how you're addressing that to, to go after that root cause, that's going to give you. A lot bigger fight in Olympia to say, we know why, and, and just to take it away isn't going to do it, we have to get to the bottom of why, and we're starting. Proactive in our county to do something about why. Um, do you know of anybody that's even studying or working on groups of the root cause?
Well, I think, um, and I don't want to put words in Gina's mouth, or Chris Corey's. But I think they would be very supportive of um, going after the repeat offenders on crime. Which anymore is like a slap on the hand and they're out the door. And so it's kind of a green light for criminals to do what they want to do. And as I've told people in the past, by the governor and I don't want to leave out Mr. Ferguson, Attorney General. By them pushing this type of legislation, all it does is embrace the bad guy. And restricts honest citizens from protecting themselves. If criminals paid attention to laws, I'd be out of business.
You're making way too much logical sense, sir. You have to think legislatively.
Yeah.
Which isn't logic and isn't sense.
You're right on that, sure.
Well, I think coordination with Aaron, you know, the problem's at your jail.
Right.
Yeah.
We have to find out why they're repeat offenders and help them with what they need so they're not.
Yeah.
Sometimes all of the enforcement you want to do isn't going to change a person's situation.
It isn't, but if you, if they take that enforcement ability away from us.
Yeah.
We certainly have no impact.
Well, if I could share a story from this morning, driving down Peck Road in Focker Huddle. Hey, car, I'm sitting there in my county car, and the guy went right in front of me and went up to one forty-one. And didn't even stop and pulled out on one forty-one, and not even stopping, it stops. Just no thought of the laws, so it's like, I'm just going to do whatever I want to do.
That's my, that's my old one.
That's very.
That is mild, but it's like that attitude.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with the, if I may, Chairman, uh, with the permit to purchase laws, would that need to go through the Sheriff's Department for uh, the permit? Or is that going to be all done by a state agency? So I'm trying to understand how if you, if you state like, I will not enforce the law. But if it doesn't go through you and it all goes through the state, how would you not enforce something like that?
Well, if I was to find out, say there was a purchase of uh, uh, well, under the permit deal, it's any weapon. Could be a pump shotgun, or it could be any, but if I found out that that was a purchase by a private party without a permit, we're never going to enforce that. Where they're really headed with this, and I think you gentlemen and ladies know this. They want to make a central location where all concealed weapons permits, background checks go through the state, uh, through the state. They'll bypass the sheriffs because of this type of letter coming out from the sheriffs. They know the sheriffs will give them resistance. So if they control it all, and I believe they've already, this year. Will have a central location in Olympia where background checks will be cleared, so will C P Ls, as I understand it, will also go through. So, yes, the sheriff will have no authority on background checks or, or concealed weapons permits. But they still, if there's a violation of the law that falls under what we believe to be unconstitutional, we still have an obligation not to enforce it. So, uh, even though, and I might also add, where they're really going after this is the gun retail dealers. That's where they're putting their own, I mean, their, their efforts in, because they know sheriffs uh, may give them resistance. Well, they go up and say, Deb at Lyle or Dan McCready here in Goldendale. And if you sell a assault weapon, uh, not only you could be facing criminal charges. Uh, on a state level under their laws, or also under A T F federal laws. And they can jerk their livelihood, their license to, to sell firearms. So that's where they're putting the restrictions on, the ma- the majority of it. But uh, uh, we think it's going to be a real battle. I don't know whether we'll be successful or not, we all know that the majority of the legislation is legislators or Democrats. And probably going to go along with Governor Inslee or the Attorney General. So our, can't say enough good about Gina and Chris, Gina Mossberger and Chris, and then, and Mr. Curtis as well, Senator Curtis. These people are good, conservative, hardworking people who fight the battle for us to be common sense laws and stuff. But it's kind of like salmon swimming upstream.
I may. Uh, one other question I would have is, is if there is a law on the books and you know, you know about the law, of course. And you choose and you publicly said, we're not going to.
Enforce it.
Enforce it, and then something bad happens using that weapon, uh, have you checked with our um, uh. I guess, risk managers, you know, the, the company that ensures us to ensure that we'd still be protected? And that they wouldn't say, well, you knew, you knew about this, you chose not to, we're not going to cover the county in this?
Well, I suppose if they took that position, you could say the sheriff acted outside his authority, and therefore we're not going to.
That's what, that's kind of what I'm worried about, so as long as.
Then I would have to take and get my own attorney in the matter.
Right, and so that's what I was, I was just wanting to make sure that we checked with the, you know, those guys that.
And I, and I got no problem with being concerned about liability. I mean, that's just common sense, you got to be concerned about that. But we can also be overconcerned about liability, because if I was overly concerned about liability, my deputies wouldn't even crawl in a patrol car. So there's always going to be uh, an attorney, you can argue both viewpoints, there's always going to be risk management, it has our concerns. And to be quite candid with you, that risk management is to protect the county, absolutely, and I understand that. But at the same time, as an elected sheriff, if I sincerely believe, in my opinion, that's an unconstitutional law. Like is being presented there, if that passes, um, I have an obligation under oath of office not to enforce it. And if I ride heat over that, I ride heat over it, that's simple.
Thank you, sir.
Continue.
Good morning. Sorry I did not get my update to you sooner, it was a little chaotic last week. I think it was Thursday I was in here with you guys with um, uh, Department of Health and. It, it's just been a crazy week, it's continued over the weekend, um, and I see this week just spiraling out of control, so. So we moved the Civil Division, all of the employees, Lisa, Jen, uh, Lisa really was the one affected. To a five-day work week to better serve the public. We want to make sure we're open during lunch hours, Lisa worked a four-ten schedule, which worked well for her, but. It wasn't allowing us to really properly serve all of the, the public. Um, we also use Lisa and Jen to staff our West End office, so. Um, and Suzie out of, uh, the Jail Reference Department, so. In order to make that just kind of smooth a little better, um, we moved everybody to the five-day work week. So there's a lot of changes uh, in civil uh, laws. Jen, or Lisa's requested some training for her role in that. I've been looking and looking for training, C J T C used to offer civil training, and they're no longer offering any training. So I'm going to reach out to Law Spic for some guidance, see what other um, sheriff's offices are using for that. So in the Corrections Division, the beginning of twenty twenty-three has started off running for the jail staff. There are thirty-two inmates are being housed in the facility currently, uh, we had a new arrest first thing this morning. Population breaks down to five females aged twenty-five to forty and males age eighteen to sixty-four. I might add that the sixty-four-year-old male has a long history with Clickatuck County. And is a very high-maintenance-problem child. The last time he was with us, I had him housed at Walla Walla for an extended length of time. In fact, over a year he was housed at Walla Walla. Um, if he stays with us now because he is on felony charges, I will be going back down that same path. Um, he almost caused a riot in the jail prior because of his behavior. He chants for uh, twenty-plus hours a day, please, if, if he was in the recreation room and he was chanting, you can hear him on Main Street, that's how loud it is. So you can imagine in a building that's built of cinder block walls, how that reverberates through the jail. So in order to maintain everybody's sanity, we will be starting that process, depending on what happens with court today. So our year started with our first transport uh, to meet up with D O C, we transferred two inmates out of D O, into D O C custody after they were sent, sentenced in Superior Court. So we've also had multiple mental health crises within the jail and with one being detained and transported to a mental health facility. Uh, the one we had, uh, we've also got one that we transported in December and, and that person is still in a facility as well. Mental health has been our biggest struggle, um, and I'm grateful for Aaron and Chris, they've really made things a lot easier for us to process. And I think looking forward, twenty twenty-three will be a better year for our mental health services coming into the jail. Um, I had a comment from the jail staff last night, they had to call the crisis line, and they said, this is the easiest it's ever been. So that's a, that's a good sign that things are working better. I mean, twenty twenty-three, we're going to be working on our training schedule for the Corrections Division. Uh, we have two, we have three dep- Corrections deputies that have to attend the ten-week Academy this year. Two are scheduled uh, tentatively according to C J T C for March, and then the third one is to be determined. We're going to be really focusing a lot on our defensive, defensive tactics, firearms and TASER training this year. And we're also going to do a lot of in-house training for report writing, cell searches, and we've all got to get um, first date updated as well. So take for instance, today I have three people on duty, um, there's courts going in, three different courtrooms, a dock at Superior Court. And um, I have three, four hold cells full of mental, uh, mentally ill people, so it's a huge challenge. Um, our overtime budget is already getting hit. Set seventeen days in and we have over seventy-five hours of overtime scheduled that went out already in the first two weeks of the payroll, so. Yeah, yeah. Nope, you're good. So this, uh, starting tomorrow, we have a trial, we, Posse continues to uh, do all of that security for us. Um, thank goodness, uh, they're averaging right now about eighty to a hundred hours, I believe, a month in court security. That's a huge um, cost benefit to us. And it also provides courtroom security five days a week into the courts. So tomorrow we have a trial, we have a big trial coming up tomorrow, uh, will last two to three days. And we've had to add extra duties for that court as well. So they, they're extremely busy, they, they're going to be lucky to even get a lunch break today. The patrol, obviously, they've also had a um, busy uh, first seventeen days of the year. Deputy Melton, Deputy Howard were assigned to their F T Os and they've hit the ground running. Deputy Melton was able to start in the second phase of the F T O program. As he had already had some experience through the reserves and had graduated the Reserve F T O program, and he was our Timber Range Patrol Deputy. Deputy Howard had no prior experience and he will do the entire F T O program. So during that F T O program, they actually go through three um, through three different deputies and. It's, you never know what the day will bring, so one of them might get to see five traffic accidents and, and nothing in one. You know, one section of their F T O program that they need, and so it's really important that they go through that, that program and they get all these different experiences. Um, as you know, Deputy Diamond completed the K nine training program and is returned to full duty, and we look forward to having him and Profi return to work. They're a great asset to the department, can be used by other departments too as needed. Um, on another note that I didn't get, um, sorry, I was typing this frantically this morning. Deputy Kirsten LaRue, she will be tentatively attending her equivalency academy in May. And I'd had her set up. And I'd had her set up in the CJT website with a January start date and they deleted my whole everything, which was about the third time this has happened to me. So we started from scratch again. On another note, I get a lot of assistance through WASP. It's the Washington Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs. And in December, right before Christmas, the GLA is on, person that I rely on. I got a phone call from retired chief Rick Bishop, who also worked for WASP. The John McGrath, who I'd been in weekly contact for the last couple of years. Unfortunately, committed suicide right before Christmas. And I think this is a harsh reminder that we really need to focus on our wellbeing for our department and others as well. Rick Bishop is going to take over as the GLA is on for WASP. And I'm hoping that we can get some additional help with some wellness programs. I know we have our EAP and things like that, but a lot of times people don't want to use something that they think that somebody might have their hands in. And, and I understand that. It's, it's a sensitive situation and topic, but I think it's something we really need to look at. I was excited when I talked to Aaron and Chris too, you know, on mental health and bringing in additional help into the jail for a nurse and things like that for, for the inmates' mental health. I think that's important. Watching people decline mentally, both in the jail and in the street, we really, really need to, to focus on that. We're talking about the root cause of crime. A lot of that is the root cause of crime. Other times it's just not, I think we have to remember, not everybody can be helped. There are people who will consistently break the law and be in prison and that's where they need to be. But those that we can help, I think we've done a really good job in the jail at doing that. I'm excited that we're going to have a, this $20,000 grant this year to help with the jail transitions program. I think that's going to be instrumental in the changing of, of our local people, both juveniles and adults. And we're still waiting on the account to get set up through the auditor's office so that we can start using that money. We did get the check, which was, we thought lost in the mail for a while, but we did, we finally got it. It only took like two and a half weeks through the US postal system to get to us.
It'll be funds that can be used, not only from the jail, but probation, correct?
Correct. So it'll be unified throughout. So I think we're going to be busy. I know Karen's going to be an update. Karen and I have made some plans for the animal shelter and stuff, and I think she's going to go over all of that. So you guys have any questions?
Doesn't look like it.
I will be giving a press release out later today. Human remains were found in the Roosevelt area over the weekend. It does not look suspicious at this point, but we will be posting a press release this afternoon.
Good morning. Can you hear me? So first of all, I just want you to say that 2022 budget, we stayed on track, did not go over, did not ask you for any money. And then revenue. I do want to assure you that we'll bill earlier for our contracted people for both the jail and for our timber, so that we get the money earlier, so that it shows up in our 2023 revenue reports. K nine, we're going to do through our volunteers for the K nine program. Well, they're going to be doing a little bit of fundraising to help pay for what Adam and Profi, their reeducation. So there'll be some light fundraising there. So Range Timber Program. We did have that meeting in December. Everybody attended and agreed to pay the bills. And I immediately went back and since they gave me the contract, their contact information. And you have this form in your packet. This is the form I gave them at that meeting. And as of that meeting date, this is what was in Kianta for the 2022 actual. So you can see that our anticipated hundred and seventeen was, that was for our two range timber deputies, but then we went down to one. So we only spent sixty one thousand. I'm just going to round the numbers. And so we only needed to come up with twenty thousand, two ninety one for the timber programs to cover their thirty three percent. I billed out all of the timber companies, including Manuel Life. And everybody, all the green numbers are the checks we have received. And Manuel Life, their check is in the mail. So that's why I say we'll bill it out earlier next year, so that it arrives in 2023. Or this year, so it arrives in 2023. But.
You're, you're billing it out halfway through the year for?
Well, I billed it out in December. So some of it crossed over and was deposited in 2023.
Okay, so it's already been deposited. But it was for 2022's.
Correct. And so I feel very confident that our program is going to be able to meet your, the requests for the thirty three percent that, that the timber companies.
Do they know that, I guess that's my only concern, do they know what they're getting into fully? And I wasn't in that meeting, Commissioner Soder was, and now he's no longer here. So.
You're welcome to come to the next meeting.
Well, send us an invite. One of us will go and we might take turns. But as the budgeted amount was a hundred and seventeen thousand, which is darn near double, what the actual, right. But so we know they're good with paying twenty thousand. Do they know that for two, it's going to be forty thousand? And they're okay with it?
They, yes, they have this form.
That's all I want is I, I want to make sure they're not surprised next year when the bill gets double.
They received this and I had a long conversation with Eric Beaker on Friday, who is shepherding the conservation team, the conservation district into the program. So he's, he's the contact that's shepherding them into the program. So he, he's been their invitee.
No, I think.
They are, the new, next meeting, we are going to discuss what the actual cost per acre is because it's been twelve cents an acre for years and years. So now we're discussing what the percent per acre is, as well as with the cattle program where it's been two dollars a head. We're going to discuss what that's going to be.
What it, what it takes to get to the number. Well, because it could change because it could be two dollars ahead if you end up not finding a second person. But if you, the budget jumps up to a hundred and seventeen thousand, it, it's going to end up costing you four dollars a head to get your percentage.
Right. Yeah, we're aware of that.
It's going to be flexible. So no, as long as, as long as they're paying the bills, they're on board, knowing there's not going to be surprises next year, I'm good.
Yeah. They are, they're incredibly happy with the program. And they came to the table with new ideas of talking about fire watch, you know, the range timber deputies participating more in some fire watch during the off season. And the sheriff can talk more about that. But we're going to talk a little bit at this next meeting about some of the duties and where the focus, some of the focuses and that type of thing. So we're going to hone the duties as well as the price.
And also a report by the range deputy, what areas they've patrolled, what gates they've gone in behind, what contacts they've made. So that the cattlemen's associate and timber company knows that they're getting their money's worth.
Right.
And so I've got a shared drive set up already that each of the contacts of the timber companies will be emailed permission in that shared drive. So they can go in at any time. Once the range deputy has emailed the report to me, I'll upload it. They'll be able to see it. So.
No, good, good stuff and a good fix to my concern.
Okay, great. Any other concerns on that?
In 2021, it looks like we had two deputies, correct?
Correct.
And then in 2022, we only had one deputy, right?
Yes.
So why was the medical insurance nearly as much for one as it was for two?
Because they started partway through the year. One of them, we had one that started partway through the year. They weren't totally all there.
So we, so we can figure that the medical insurance is going to be fourteen thousand roughly per person then?
No. That's an HR and Cody came and left in 2022, partway through the year. So.
Odds are somebody in 2021, there was two employees, but only one of them needed the benefit.
Well, in 2021, one of them started later on in the year.
Because I'm, I'm just looking at it, trying to budget, because if you want two for 2024 year.
Get you a dollar amount for both, for two, for full time for that rate, I can do that.
Right, for the whole thing. Because what I'm working at, like, you know, conservatively is, not conservatively, probably closer to honest, is about fifty thousand would be the, their portion at the thirty three percent.
I can send you the numbers if there's two for that rate.
Got it.
Yeah, because you're talking people who weren't working full time. I mean, full year.
Well, it's got to be something when your salaries are about the same as your benefits, because usually it's about forty percent, not a hun- you know, a hundred percent.
Right. Yeah, I can, I can send you the info.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah, that is weird. I mean, I, I would imagine if there are only seasonal employees working six months, we're only paying medical for six months.
They were.
They work year around.
Year round.
Reduced hours during the winter.
Well, I, I so we pay their full medical over the winter, even when they're on reduced hours.
And were we not paying medical back in 2020?
Because that was a retiree that had Medicare. Both of those were retirees who had Medicare.
And you also had Ray Manley, who had their own insurance.
Yeah, Harold and Ray.
And Harold as well had their own insurance.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay, so so I'll let you know when we have the next meeting scheduled. The marine program, the boat has a hole in it.
Crack.
In the hull. And so it's going to need to go to Clarkston, Clarkston for repair, warranty repairs. And so.
Hey, a hole should be warranted for life. So they just need to do a little aluminum welding.
Right, but.
Donate a few pop cans to add to it.
Thank you. But.
You're going to drive it over there is what they really want.
Uh, no, actually, I am, my husband and I.
Oh, you are?
You could deliver an inmate somewhere over there too and write it off.
My father-in-law lives there, so we're sent for on a, we've got to go over there anyway. So we'll just take the boat and save the county some fuel costs.
But we've asked the marine program if we could borrow a boat for now, one of the Ospreys. The marine Parks and Rec Marine Program, they've got an extra boat. So we've asked if during the time that our boat is unavailable, if we can use one of theirs.
They tell you how long it's going to be?
We don't know. Hood River Marina currently still has the boat. I talked to Randy over the weekend. And I will get, Randy, I believe is on duty today. So Randy will make contact with Hood River Marina to see when they're ready. When they're ready to go, if it, even if it's this weekend, I can take the boat out. It's not that big of a deal.
Weird.
So I thought it was very strange that Hood River Marina would not have an aluminum welder. They're a.
No, it's, yeah.
So.
They're, they're up here and they're not very common and they get paid really well.
Yeah.
So body worn camera program is working fantastic. Our guys are all very happy, right, Adam?
It's been great.
We have one for the dog.
That would be fantastic.
He's got a light bar.
See him racing through the woods chasing people. It could be good.
He's, we have GoPros for him.
I was going to say, you put one on him, we could probably sell tickets. It could be fundraising revenues. Sorry.
It's okay. We are always thinking about that. And then the Corrections Division cameras will be deployed as soon as the policy through Lexipol is approved. Because that's, our jail will be the first to have, one of the first to have cameras. So this is good news. So the animal shelter, yay. Save the best for last. So Tim Neer had submitted a proposal for eight hundred and some odd thousand dollars to the Department of Commerce. We were awarded six hundred and forty nine thousand dollars as a direct appropriations grant for an animal shelter. It's a ten year program with eight years of funding. The majority of the funding is for the actual building with a small portion of funding for one animal control officer, well, two animal control officers to cover some of their salary. A portion of this program is to provide sustainability for the program through an adoption center for the animals as their sustainability revenue source and through inmate housing, shall we say? So if an animal is dropped off, there's a charge and the owners will pay for the upkeep while we've had the animal in house. So we are planning on, I haven't worked out all the details because that part wasn't all, it, it was just sort of a, here's the broad outline. And so Carmen and I are working on all of the details to provide sustainability and future funding. And there will be a 501(c)(3) that will be set up to provide for any of the animal care needs that the shelter will need as well as employee funding and two of the cities we've approached to also have them see if they would like to come in with us on the project. One city already has a part-time animal control officer. And so that could be their donation to our two animal control officers. It will be you know, something that we're going to have to craft. So if you have any ideas, thoughts, we're going to have the building be small enough to start with. We're not planning a grandiose Taj Mahal for the animal shelter. It's going to be small, functional, workable, not funded, I mean, not manned. So it's a drop the dogs and go. The animal control officers are going to be there. We're not going to have a secretary or somebody manning it twenty four hours a day type facility. Does that make sense?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
City did that for years.
Yeah.
Under their shelter. And I'm going to take the opportunity to thank each and every one of you on the board for aligning property, county property. I understand that you gave that to us to put the shelter on. That was a I hope I'm correct in that comment, but anyway, that's obviously a savings in trying to get that off and going. And so I want to thank you personally for that.
Chairman?
Good.
Well, Karen and I have met this last week and talked in depth about the animal shelter program. One thing we both are is not experts in animal shelters. So we are going to be doing some field trips to some animal shelters in our neighboring cities, one of those being Canvas. Because we realize we're not, we can't build a Taj Mahal, of course. I mean, we have some reality of what needs we have for the county with all the calls we've had. But I think it's important. But I think it's important for us to go out and meet people to see what works, what doesn't work in their facilities. Sorry. And looking at facilities, we've already met with, um, Public Works about what kind of building, uh, would be ideal. And they're, we're talking cinder block. We want something easy to clean, easy to maintain, of course. Um, the lo- the location I think is ideal. It's away from, uh, a highly populated area. I think that will work well. Um, and this is all gonna be a learning experience for, I know myself. Um, I was involved somewhat with the city, um, dogs program over here in Goldendale. Um, it was not a twenty-four hour, um, manned unit. I believe that we've got enough volunteers within our posse that we will not have any problem producing volunteers who will go up and help care and clean for these animals that come into our facility.
I might interject real quickly. It would probably be based on the hours like our veterinarian clinics are.
No, we realize we have.
There'll be somebody, I'm sorry, somebody on call, of course, if the needs are, they'd go down there and take care of it. But I don't see any need to staff at twenty-four seven. Uh, you don't see that at, uh, veterinarian clinics. Um, and they have a person on call in emergencies can go down and take care of business.
Yeah, we could probably put in a security system, so there would be a motion detector. So if an animal did get loose, there would be somebody who could, uh, respond to that. And so there would be a way to, um, send somebody over and relocate that animal back in its cage. There will also be, if you think of an area where there's a walled off, um, section for dangerous dogs only. That would be the security area for any of those completely, um, dangerous dogs that we are not going to risk putting within the cute puppy area, shall we say? And also exposing them to a veterinarian office until they've been decided what's gonna happen to those dogs. So that'll be a safe area for those dogs to go. And then there will be the, we'll continue calling them the cute puppy area that, I don't know if you guys are looking on Facebook and between, even between the white salmon page and the Goldendale page, but I've been watching how many, oh, there's a dog running loose here and a dog running loose there. There are so many loose dogs everywhere that, um, there's a problem between the two towns and, even out Houston, I'm noticing dogs out there too, so, um, anyway, this will be a way for us to, um, reduce those number of calls and for having people bring the loose dogs someplace without having, um, the vets inundated with, uh, extra dogs that they are all of a sudden having to care for.
So I'm assuming eventually we're gonna see a budgetary ask that you guys or your group or your nonprofit or whatever you're forming is going to break down what the actual costs are on a yearly basis for the ten-year deal and find out what the actual costs of running this facility is going to be. And then a cost of how much you're expecting to raise in fundraising and how much you're actually asking the county to do. And then that information would go with the appropriation of the finance committee to get vetted and to make a presentation to the board eventually.
Eventually, yes. And if all goes well, I am hoping that the ask that goes to the county is the very minimal part and that we can fundraise the majority of it.
I want that real number because I don't believe the fundraising is gonna be there. I think the county's gonna end up having to pay for what didn't get fundraised. So I'm not looking at fundraising when I say yes and no. It's the dollar amount. Because when we sign the grant, we're signing that we're on the hook for ten years.
Right.
And that may be this sheriff, it could be the next sheriff, the posse may be here, the posse may not be here. I have to look at it as it's county funded the whole way, the entire dollar amount. If any of that's written off by volunteer, perfect.
No, I, I'm.
Understand.
We, I'm, I'm, I'm on the same page with you.
Okay.
Do you have a ticking time clock on your construction?
Uh, we, we had originally written it in as a two-year construction. So we had written in, uh, setup and kind of do the, uh, uh, the setup and start construction in year one and then finalize construction.
How, uh?
May have the environmental stuff going on.
How far behind schedule are we right now?
Six months to eight months.
And do we have work to do for the use of that property? Do we have things we need?
Um, we haven't officially signed off on the use. Jeff was just asked by the sheriff department to look for properties. So we were given an update on what properties are available and that's kind of where it left.
How many dogs are you planning to own?
We, go ahead.
Do what?
How many dogs are we planning to? We were thinking fifteen to twenty.
Yeah.
If they're little, little, little guys, we can, um, have them in smaller kennels and those can be stacked. Larger dogs can have their own.
Do we have, do we have county ordinances that require, uh, pets to not be running at large? And if they do, the owner when found can be fined?
Yes.
Do we find?
Certain areas of the county.
Well, I know there's only pet ordinances in very few areas. My point is, I guess if you find a dog running at large over on whatever, let's call it Hocker Road, uh, there's no dog ordinance over there. When you find the owner, are you allowed to give the dog owner a fine for having a stray dog?
I believe we can ask him to, well, yes, because we're housing the dogs, so they're gonna be responsible for it.
Do we currently?
No.
Even though we're still housing the dog at the vet essentially?
Yes, and we're usually the one on the hook for the vet bill.
Why are we not charging the owner of the stray dog? Wouldn't that be the?
We have in cases.
To get people to obey the law with their dog?
Yes, and we're not opposed to that. We have where it's, uh, dog-controlled areas. It gives us more teeth because the ordinance requires them to have it on leash. We can't run at large for all those reasons.
Right, and I guess that's where I'm coming from. Because for me, most of these dogs that I see the pictures of on Facebook, it's the same Siberian husky cross that's in the McDonald's parking lot every other day. And we know the owner and if you don't, I mean, we live in a nation of laws. There's consequences. But are there consequences? And people won't put up a fence unless they get a fine that says, okay, now I need to put up a fence. Now you took care of the dog without building a multimillion-dollar facility. So I guess my point is, do we need county policies to help law enforcement actually go after repeat offenders today? That might save us from needing a pound in the future.
I agree with you. We do need some additional policies and procedures, ordinance.
I would be curious on what you think those are. If you can write something up, I would love to hear it.
Yeah. I think an important thing to remember, an important thing that, um, to point out is we're not just going out and getting stray dogs, dogs and housing them at the vets. The ones we've gotten are dangerous dogs, those that have been very vicious and bitten people. A number of those dangerous dogs actually, actually came off the Lisle Point where we have no control because that is not, um, under our rule. Um, we can't, um, well, some, well, we can't, we can't go build fences down there and whatnot.
Right.
Um, so I believe we'd had four dogs from down there.
We've had seven.
Seven dogs from down there, so, um, some of that is out of our control. But we're not just housing all the random stray dogs at the vet.
They had two, the four pit bull breed or crossbreed attacked an individual jogging down there, tore him up pretty bad.
Right, I guess my point is if, if that case happens, you're not gonna put that dog or those dogs, another pit bull lover. You're not gonna put an aggressive pit bull that attacked a person in a pound and then rehabilitate him and.
Correct.
You, you're gonna put him down, so technically they never really left the vet's office.
Right.
Um, so you don't need the facility for the dangerous wildlife.
Well, we do need the facility because they don't go directly to a vet. If the vets.
You get the proceed, you have to go through.
Right, you have to put that dog somewhere. If that dog come, come in at midnight, I don't wanna have to call the vet out to go open their office to take that vet. The deputies have to have a place to go put that dog directly. Because dogs don't obey time limits and they don't work eight to five.
I get it, but for seven dogs, I can pay Carl an emergency visit in the middle of the night cheaper than I can build a facility.
Well, but.
That's what I'm looking at.
But at a hundred dollars a day.
Per dog.
Per dog for twenty-one days while they sit and wait for rabies verification. If the dog, if there's no rabies vaccine.
That's still, I'm sorry, much cheaper than a facility.
I, I realize that.
Yeah, but you have other reasons to have a facility, not just that.
Right.
Yeah, that's just one reason. Well.
So I'm just, you know, just Googling over here and looking at costs. Cause I remember when we got this, you know, it was a estimate of five hundred thousand dollars to build a facility. We just heard earlier that the cost of construction in the last year for what we wanna do down at Dalzport has, went up forty percent. And so with that, I'm, my first fear is do we have enough money to actually build the facility? Power, water, everything that needs to go in there. And so we need those construction and those designs sooner rather than later. We're gonna be burning through that as we do the design and engineering and everything. And then more importantly, the commissioner Christopher was saying, we need to see the dollars and cents of the hiring people and everything else. Because, you know.
Sure.
When I'm looking at, you know, just the hours worked and for one person, you know, with the Timber Range Deputy Program, and I'm, I'm guessing that, you know, your dog people will probably work about the same number of hours in a year.
Right. Um, so number one, uh, we can build the facility in a scaled-down model of, we don't have to have a very large building is enough to handle if, our dream could be fifteen dogs, but seven dogs, you know, to start with. And then when we raise more money, then we can add on. You know, so we, we're gonna look at all of our options, come up with many different proposals. We're also going to talk with Columbia County who built the Taj Mahal of, um, over in Oregon, uh, in the St. Helens area. And they, about two thousand and seventeen, pulled the funding, the commissioners pulled the funding on their animal shelter. I wanna find out why. I wanna find out what went wrong.
Be a really good one and ask what that funding was.
And, and I wanna see what went right, what went wrong. So those are some of the things that we're gonna ask. The animal shelter in Camas that we're gonna go visit is not the public animal shelter, not the Humane Society Animal Shelter, but one of the small, uh, what is it called? Mutt?
Yeah, it's called something, but it's a very, it's a very small.
Small shelter, yeah. Um, so we're gonna ask the hard questions and find out what other people have done wrong and what they did right and how to be cost-effective for a rural area.
So are you gonna try to make it a humane society? I'm looking at the Columbia County Taj Mahal and it looks like they turned it into Columbia Humane Society.
Yeah, no, uh, we're, we're, I've been asked the county offices what went right, what went wrong. Um, so we're gonna, we're gonna find out.
And I'm sure you'll find two different expenses or two different costs on whether you run a kill shelter or non-kill shelter.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
The public backlash that comes with one of them.
Right.
There's, and I think there's always public backlash, but I think too that the public also understands that there are certain dogs who are so dangerous, they cannot be out, you know, into the, to the public and.
Well, and I think we need to be careful with our local veterinary service and what they provide to, to all of us and to the ranchers and everybody, how much space they have, how much time they have to take these on. And they're doing it now as much as they can, but.
Exactly. Yeah.
They're gonna be part of our board.
Right, which is perfect with that coordinated effort because I can't imagine what they face daily with people calling about animals and thinking that the vet can just take everybody.
Right. So if you're gonna have a nonprofit, then will the employees be employees of the nonprofit? Or are you hoping that the employees will be county employees?
Probably, probably county employees. It will depend on how, we're gonna have some memorandum of understanding with the other agencies and how much they can de- dedicate a, um, animal control officer. And I can't speak for them right now because we haven't met with them and they may not even be arrested. But I'm assuming they would be because this would be, if it all, if we're successful, this will be the only animal shelter in the county, period. So this could be a very beneficial to the city of Goldendale as well as White Salmon Benjy. So anyway, we're kinda anxious to look at that and see where we're meeting.
Yeah, I would be curious, cause I would want that to be more than, you know, your animal control officer, they need to pay their share of what they're using, just like the courts. If, if the, if the dog jail is full of their people, then they're paying the majority of the bill and, and, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think you got a good start.
Yeah.
Um, once you get into it more and get more data, then we'll have more information.
Sure, absolutely.
This is definitely a learning process.
Any other questions on dog shelter?
I'm forward to hearing about it in the future and seeing the business plans.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Then I'm scared to ask.
You know, it's also gonna be, come with a website too, because, you know, every animal shelter has a website, so. Um, luckily we have a great person in our posse that can help build, um, a website for us and, and things like that, so. We're gonna be busy, let's just say that.
Um, while we're waiting though on that, I would still like to see if you think there's things or policies we can do on a county level too.
I agree. That's a good idea.
Um, you know, you gotta have the carrot, you gotta have the stick too.
I agree.
We don't have the stick or we're not, you, do we have the stick and are not using it or you don't have it? So we can have that discussion also while we're having that discussion.
I, I think in some cases, we just don't have the authority. Cause if we got challenged by finding somebody, where's your authority in then?
Well, and that's, that's something we can, I think it's twofold because that needs to be done. Whether this happens, yes or no.
I agree.
That's still needs to be done.
Right.
So, yeah.
Has to be some accountability for, um, animal owners.
Right. And hey, your first offense, here's your dog back. Your second offense, here's a hundred bucks. Third offense, here's the bill for three hundred bucks.
Right.
Uh, whatever, you know, we need to have something.
Start that out as a civil infraction.
Right.
Second time.
Something. Criminal. So yeah, if you can look into that, I'd be really curious. I think we can nip a lot of it in the bud, not all of it, but at least we can get a start on it.
I know that we're also gonna be looking at some other ordinances, um, and maybe, um, drafting new ordinances for, um, alarms. Alarm company violations because, uh, we have one, uh, windmill site, uh, last year, one, just one of its buildings had over ninety-one alarms. So the bigger cities, actually, if you have more than two alarms, you know, they get fined.
Bring me a policy idea.
So, so I, Sergeant Riggers is actually working on that, um, because I think it's important. We, these, these calls are getting just out of control when we could be doing something a little more productive in the county. That would be then the false alarms that don't even have contact information.
There are so many recreational homes down where I am that have alarms.
Well, and it goes beyond just the eating up resources because of false alarms. But it's a dangerous situation because the officers respond in code three and that could be a problem. I know Clark County has an ordinance, has for years. There's most areas, Yakima, I'm sure I'd be shocked if they didn't have one. So we should be able to do the research.
It, it shouldn't be recreating the wheel, it's stealing somebody else's, modifying, tweaking it. We're just a little in the Stone Age and we're finding these things out, so yes, but.
Right.
Anything else for us? That was actually a very good, healthy discussion right there. I enjoyed that.
It was. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a busy week.
Anything?
No, I'm good.
It's trial week.
It's a busy week, right? I write. Hey, your population's only thirty three or something. You shouldn't be complaining. It's not fifty five.
Correct, but half of them are mentally ill, so if you'd like to.
Yeah, but when there was fifty five, there was still half.
You know, you know why the population is down.
Well, drug laws changing.
Right.
Can't arrest them for possession.
They took away the stick.
Yes, exactly.
Well, case in point, talking about the drug laws, uh, last week, the sheriff goes in to use the restroom in the jail lobby. And he notices something is a little amiss, ceiling tiles on the ground, there's garbage kind of laying all over. Clearly, somebody had been in there.
I thought maybe they were doing repairs or something, but.
Turns out, um, we had a young man who'd been in the night before and he'd spent about ten fifteen minutes in the bathroom. Um, what he forgot was his seventeen grams of meth that he left in the ceiling that was confiscated and destroyed.
So he used the bathroom before he checked into the facility.
No, he didn't even check into the facility. He just was hanging out the lobby. It was warm and cozy and so.
Just decided to hide his drugs while he was hanging out for warm and cozy.
Correct.
Yeah.
Carmen's bed and breakfast is now the lobby.
Correct. Um, I talked to, um, Buildings and Grounds actually about. Uh, doing something with those doors so that after hours, it's a key card system or something. So that that wasn't just open for people to hang out in. Um, with the glass doors, we're not sure that that's possible. I can't lock the doors. You know, I need it. It needs to be an easy way in and out for all law enforcement. That's where backup comes through, ambulance, et cetera, but. So I can't just key lock them because those doors aren't key locked. We can't do that.
And even if we had caught him putting the meth up there.
Yeah.
It's not his pockets.
Not his pockets.
Here's your counseling card.
Well, it's not his ceiling. Chairman, are you ready for a motion?
Um, if we're done, I'm ready for a motion to adjourn for lunch.
I'll second.
Well, I'll move it then.
You'll move it, you'll second it. Oh, I thought I fixed it this morning, but maybe I bumped it again. All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn for lunch back at one o'clock. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. We're in the middle.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, um, I'm subpoenaed for trial this week, so.
Good luck.
Close the recording.
Hey, usually I file these, but I've got to keep this. All right, it is one o'clock. We will start the general meeting of the Clickatack County Board of Commissioners. Let the record show that all three commissioners are present. Uh, we will open with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
Mister Chairman, I would approve the business agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve the business agenda. Do I have a second?
I can second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of approving the business agenda as presented, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes unanimously. I don't believe we have any meeting minutes yet. All right, so with that, we will move into public testimony. Uh, this is the opportunity for members of the public to inform the board about your views on issues. This is not a time or place for dialogue. Or debate with the board members. If you'd like to have a conversation with any of the commissioners, please call or email that commissioner. At this point, I'd like to go over some of the ground rules that include the values and behaviors that everyone we will be expected to adhere to if they choose to testify. Please be respectful. Remember that people of goodwill can disagree with your perspective. Disagree without being disagreeable. Be civil. Please not engage in disruptive, discourteous, threatening, disparaging, or otherwise uncivil behavior. You will have up to three minutes to speak. Um, we normally have had a Zoom timer. Um, that is being updated right now, so we're going to keep it on a clock up here, so I apologize for not having a timer on your screen for those of you at home. During your public testimony, you can only address the board one time. Um, no remarks after, and then please give your name and location for the record at the start of your testimony. So people listening on Zoom can know who they're who they're hearing. Um, we'll start within the room. Does anybody in the room have public testimony today? That they want to start with. There's more time later. Seeing none, we'll go on to Zoom land. Anybody on Zoom land have a public comment today? Please unmute yourself, raise your hand, uh, do something that we notice you. Uh, thirty four people online, we're losing our attendance.
It's sunny outside.
Huh?
It's sunny.
It's sunny outside, they're all golfing? You can comment about golf and tell me how your game went this morning. I'm fine with that. I can move like curiously through your golf game. Seeing none. Yep, there we go. Gabrielle Gilbert, go ahead.
Sorry about that. Okay, hi. Thank you so much. Um, first and foremost, yes, it's important to be respectful and part of that respect is. Um, showing that to the county commissioners that sit on that board by referring to them by their name. So to County Commissioner Lori Zoller, I appreciate the conversation that we had. Um, on Saturday and, um, and it was important because. I know that you will be an integral part in how we're moving forward with childcare as infrastructure. Um, I take issue with inflammatory rhetoric that was used by the commissioner last week in the discussion about nine one one emergency calls. Um, in a hundred years, there has only been two cougar deaths and, um, and twenty incidences of injury. And that's over the course of a hundred years. And the issue of what's happening with the cougars and the wildlife policy is that. That policy is representative of a loophole that was used in state law, but state law also states that we preserve, protect. And consider our wildlife as a resource that we care about and that we protect and preserve. And that part of the component has to exist as well and inflammatory rhetoric does not assist that. What's more, I spoke, got off the phone about an hour ago with McKenzie County in North Dakota to find out how they did childcare. Um, also spoke to the, um, county to say that, um, it is my hope that each of you county commissioners will make that phone call as well. Um, and how McKenzie County made it a priority that the growth that was happening in their community and the need that was. Uh, happening in their community became a priority of the county commissioners to. Build the infrastructure that was childcare. What they did was use grant, I'm sorry, they did not use grant dollars. The, uh, oil industries, the industries, uh, the energy industries that came into their county are taxed and those tax dollars that went to their state. Were funneled back down for counties to use. So the twenty million dollar bill that they do on this. On the ground build, which is infrastructure, the water, the actual building. All of those dollars came from the state through that taxable income from industry. So how the county addresses the taxable income that that you have industries coming in? Or how we address the state level of subsidies that come in to to build childcare, the USDA. Uh, rural development grants, all of that needs to come on on the table to to to. Figure out what's happening or how you're going to make this happen. Also, tonight at the Grange is going to be a movie about raising children. And it's about childcare. That is at, um, six thirty tonight at the, um, Mount Adams Grange. I know that's short notice, but if you can make any of those meetings, I know that WAGAP will be there, the mayor of White Salmon will be there. The library is also hosting it and it will be at the Mount, um, View Grange in White Salmon. Time and, um.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
Appreciate it.
Alrighty, we will go back into the room. Anybody in the room have, uh, miss, sorry, uh, Mr. West stood up first. Name and general location for the record, sir.
David West, Centerville. I'm actually going to offer a bit of a rebuttal to Gabby's opinion about the cougars. Uh, this last year, I was selected and served with the Fish and Wildlife for the Cougar Focus Group. There is a significant problem with cougars in our state and very specifically Clickatack County. Also this morning, Jake, you missed it at McDonald's, there was a crew in there. That are doing the deer survey of our county right now by their side contractor. Chatted up with them. I said, how many cougar do you see? He says, you have a lot of cougars in this county, a lot. And I says, well, how many have you seen? He says, you rarely see them. And I says, how many dead do you see? He said, you have a lot of cougars. And we have been in my entire life until the last ten years, you never saw a cougar in the Centerville area. We did not find them under people's homes. We did not have as much depredation on pets. Stalking people or damaged the livestock that we have had in the last ten, twelve years in this county. It is by far greater numbers than they wish to admit. The real count is much closer to eight thousand cougars in our state, not twenty two hundred. We have killed in this state, this county, as I understand it, around thirty cougars since this started over three years ago. We initially killed a lot of cougars that were the problem ones. In the meantime, it's gone way downhill. Since the hunting without dogs ceased, the population expanded. We've had bad winters, the deer population has gone down. We've had people move out into the cougar territory and then complain about the cougars. But they are a problem. They're by far more numerous than the cougar huggers want to admit. Thank you.
Yeah, one little point on there is I was in a, uh, Washington Fish and Wildlife meeting about cougars, I don't know, three, four years ago. Uh, and according to their experts, we had roughly six cougars in Clickatack County. Um, so, yeah, math is funny sometimes. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. West. Uh, let's go, actually, we'll go back in the room. Mr. Wagner stood up, so let's go back to him.
Greg Wagner was seized. Mr. Anderson is operating an unpermitted short term rental. He sits on the board passing judgments on other citizens' short term rental com- complaints while in. He is in, under investigation. This is a violation of the RCW forty two thirty six, a state law. Mr. Anderson should recuse himself as he cannot render a fair and impartial decision. He is also violating his oath of office. Chair, Mister Chairman, you are in charge of the board. If this board is to function in an ethical manner, Mr. Anderson should be. Asked to recuse himself from any involvement with the short term rental code complaints or the enactment of short term. Rental policies until he complies with the county requirements. He has a conflict of interest considering he has two code complaints filed against him for his unpermitted short term rental. Mochi Lynn Blad, the planning director, who this board has always trusted her opinions stated, short term rentals. Are required to have a conditional use permit. She also told the same thing to the code compliance officer. Mr. Anderson refuses to follow the county requirements and has not obtained a conditional use permit. Conditional use permits ensure that the short term rentals are in compliance with the county codes and safe to operate. A CUP protects the county from lawsuits. On January tenth, Mr. Anderson addressed. His concerns and fears about the way the solar moratorium was enacted. His tone was very disrespectful to his seatmates. He did not have the concerns, he did not have those concerns when the May two thousand and twenty one solar moratorium was adopted. Because he and Mr. Sauter knew that they would rescind it. He only opposed the solar moratoriums. He supported a moratorium for the ten year old mobile home placement. Jake is trying to prevent the solar moratorium to to help Cypress Creek. The citizens in county are no concern to him. Jake is losing control and doesn't like it. He spoke about the possible open public meetings violation. Here is a email in which Jake tells a citizen what was discussed in executive session, an Open Public Meetings Act violation. And violating RCW forty two twenty three zero four zero. Number four, Jake needs to be investigated for violating state laws, the same laws he took an oath to uphold.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. This is the email, I'm assuming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Only three copies, so. I will read this later, sir. Thank you. All right, citizen comment, anybody online have? Jump out of my skin. Um, anybody else sitting online have a citizen comment for us today? Raise your hand, unmute yourself, star nine or whatever it is. I don't remember. We haven't done that in a while. Seeing none, back in the room. Anybody, there we go. Please step forward, name and general location for the record.
Debbie Wagner, Goldendale, I'm part of CEES. Uh, I just have one quick question. It was discussed last week that the prosecuting attorney would take over STRs. In trying to write up, I'm guessing a resolution or an ordinance, uh, whatever he would call it. Uh, my question is, what happens after he writes that? I know it takes thirty to forty five days. But is, will it go to a hearing? Will we have, be able to speak? Does it just go to the B O C C? What happens with that, please? That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Yep. We will answer that, uh, in a few. Thank you for your comment. Reset the timer. Uh, anybody else online have citizen comment for us today? Did you get your copy back?
No, it's okay. It's okay. I'll keep downs for a minute.
Well, I have, I have one too. He just had two. All right, sorry, back to, back to business here. Anybody in the room? Anybody citizen comment? We have fifteen minutes, ten minutes left. There'll be more chances if you don't want to take it now. I'm looking at you, Sherri, kind of, your hand is up and down. You're like, do I want to speak now or should I wait for seven minutes so I can have the last remark? Now or later, your choice. All right, here she comes.
Oh, come on now.
Name and general location for the record, ma'am.
Uh, Sherri Basque, Husum area. And again, I want to thank you. Whoa, hey, these mics do work.
Get too close.
Yeah, so again, I want to thank you for standing up for the moratorium, signing the resolution. And I I'm assuming last week you did assign the resolution for the solar moratorium. And, um, sorry, I'm a bit late. Uh, I I missed whether or not you had a moment to explain the process of. How this moratorium kind of will generally work, um, just for the people as we're going forward of how it. Uh, the process works with the public hearing, who we will be, uh, submitting our comments to. Um, for the the public hearing and, um. So tha- that's the process I'm looking for a little bit more clarity on. Like, are we submitting it to the B O C C? Are we submitting our comments to the Planning Commission? And that gives people like a little bit of a heads up of what direction we're going to be going with the, uh. With the solar moratorium in the hearing, which I guess will be within sixty days. Would that be the ca- calendar day of the third when it was first enacted or will it be like last week? I guess we're, we're picking hairs here.
Probably not going to get anywhere close to sixty, so I I'm guessing thirty to forty five.
Okay.
So I don't know when the actual statute date starts.
Okay.
But I wouldn't worry about it. We're not going to drag it out for sixty.
Okay. Well, okay, so there was, um, that and I appreciate, um. Uh, you all wanting to be transparent more in the upcoming year with ho- hosting town halls. I know we're talking about that again, but I feel that's very important that our elected officials, who we've trusted to be our voices. You know, have, uh, interaction with the people. And again, I appreciate that the moratorium I've heard several times was because we haven't had enough public input. So I believe public input is very important as we move forward with the comprehensive planning and a lot of things that'll be happening with this county in the future. And, um. I think that's basically, I I wanted to talk about short term rentals. And I I guess I'm going to honestly ask, since I attended the workshop Thursday, is that, you know, with my research into this, um, short term rentals. The county does have a process in place right now to obtain a short term rental. The county. Planning Director did email me directly when I asked how to do a short term rental on my primary residence and her quick and short. And her quick and short answer was to obtain a conditional use permit. And then as she testified as well to you on Thursday, she did also inform you that you are to have a conditional use permit, to have a short-term rental. That is the current policy of Clickittack County. And you are a complaint-driven county. And at this point, I would ask that you commissioners not ignore complaints of short-term rentals and the policy that is already put in place. As you move forward to write short-term rental ordinances, I understand those are important, but please do not ignore complaints and the process that is in place.
Thank you, ma'am. And we will, I'm sure, address your questions there about the town halls and the process of the moratorium. I'd already planned on doing that, but I'll make sure we do that. Anybody, let's go back online. Anybody online have citizen comment today? Don't make it the first day that we don't have online comment.
Gabrielle did.
Oh, that's true. All right.
I think they're having problems with the phones and the internet on the west end again.
All right, back in the room. There's only two of you that haven't already had comments. So yeah, I'm staring at one of you because I can't see the other one. Oh, hi. I see the other one. He's hiding back there. Out of camera angle view and everything. All right, back online. Anybody comment about anything related to something that has to do with the county? Seeing none. Do either of my seatmates want to answer any of the questions or make comments to any of the comments that were given?
Sure.
All right, we'll start with Mrs. Allen.
I'd like to say thank you for Gabrielle, for her comments. And I did enjoy our conversation this weekend. And I think we worked through a couple of items that she had questions about, which was, was nice, nice to meet you in person and talk about those things. And I do have in my notes to follow up with McKenzie, South Dakota or North Dakota and check out their process. I'm very interested in the childcare process and what we can do about it and how we can seek out funding for it. So I'll be following up with that. But thank you to everybody else for their comments today and duly noted. And I have it in my notes and we'll follow through.
That it? Do you have anything, sir?
You want to go first? I'm still putting my thoughts.
I can, if you want. I started this a little early because we didn't, actually, real quick, I'll go back to say if there's any citizen comment online or in the room. Before I give my comments, I'll give another shout out, see if there's anybody out there I might be ignoring. All right, not seeing none, so I will go ahead and go. Yes, I want to thank Ms. Gilbert for her comments. I think in the research I did about the North Dakota thing is essentially they were having an oil fracking boom. So they got a lot, they were flush with cash. Had more tax money and tax revenue that they knew what to, what to do with. So you might as well, you know, do a lot of things, including a childcare facility. So, you know, maybe we'll get flush with oil money someday. But I think that's where they got all their big cash for that. Marty commented on that. To Mr. Wagner with conflict of interest in Mr. Anderson, that somehow I have some power that I don't have, that I can make a commissioner recuse themselves. It's up to the individual commissioner to recuse themselves from any issue. Not for me to tell somebody they're not allowed to vote on something. Whether I agree with you or not agree with you, that's a different point. But it's not for me in a complex of interest. Procedure for the public hearing, because I did, I was listening to Dell's podcast earlier at lunch before your wife came in, actually. And there was some mischaracterizations of, of the procedure for that. So the procedure for that is going to be pretty much the same procedure we did last time, where this board will have a public hearing to decide what it wants to do. In that public hearing, it will come up with a finding of fact, hopefully this time, and decide whether it's, nope, there's no issues, pull the moratorium like what happened last time. And then it goes on its merry way of where we are today. Or the board finds that, yes, we need to look deeper into this. We need ordinances, we need whatever, site-specific, whatever. And then that's what the findings of fact would say. And then the board would, yes, have public hearing for here. And then we would make a finding of fact that would then send it to the Planning Commission and they would have more hearings to do a fact-finding mission and whatnot. And then make a recommendation. The Planning Commission would then make a recommendation that would go to Moshi. Moshi would then make a recommendation to us, which may or may not align with what the Planning Commission said. But we will get both recommendations. We will see what the Planning Commission said and we will see what Moshi says. And then it's up to this board to make a decision on what we're going to do. If this board makes a different decision than what is presented to us and we want to add a caveat, we'll have to have more public hearings because we added a caveat. So that's the way it's been explained to me on how it's going to go. Any more questions, I'd have to probably go dig them up. Hopefully that answers that one. STR, same idea. STRs will, the, the ordinance will be written just like it was for the model decommissioning plan. And then we'll have as many public hearings as we need. We might change it, we might tweak it. Every time we change it or tweak it, we got to have another public meeting. If we change the word from should to shall, we got to have another public meeting. So that's the process. So there will be many. Or maybe there's none. Maybe we have one public, well, there'll be one, but maybe we'll have one and it looks good. And then it's signed from there, but there will at least be one. Town halls, I agree with you. I've always thought we should be doing town halls. I actually think we should go around the county. One month do them in one city and another month in another city. The problem is we have to look at is availability. Ideally, I would like to not do them after work because people like have busy. I'd like to do them on a Saturday at noon kind of thing where anybody can go versus in the evening kind of thing. I don't know, it's something we need to discuss, but either way, we also have to look at staff time because it's an open public meeting. We're going to have to publicize, we're going to do it. And then either staff has to be there to take notes or we have to have the ability to record it or one of us have to have the ability to take notes because we have to do minutes. So it's a matter of do we tell staff you have to work on a Saturday now to do minutes? Or are we going to do the minutes? Or are we going to record it for two hours and then they can listen to it later, Monday through Friday, and do the minutes? So we're still in original talks. We'll, you'll hear more about it, I'm sure, in what we end up deciding on that. And that's what I had. So we have five minutes left. Mr. Anderson, you can go or I can go back to citizen comment.
If there's any citizen comment.
All right, citizen comment. Anybody in the room or online? Have any questions, comments, anything for us?
May I ask, if you have no one, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
Okay. Just to clarify for sure on the solar moratorium, understanding what you just said, that meeting that's required will come before the 60 days is up, will be the county commissioners' open public meeting?
Yes.
And then we'll make a decision from there to move it to planning commission.
Correct.
Public hearing, okay, okay.
So in whether we do that in this room or whether we potentially do that downstairs where the glass doors can open and that whole lobby can be seated, I think we can seat 90 people down there. So that's what we're looking at, but we want to make sure the AV equipment and the speakers and everything else is going to be functioning before we announce that. I, I am going to do chairman's prerogative. You look like you had a responsive question, but if it's very quick, I'll take it. Sherri Buske again, for everybody on there.
For clarity, the comments would be submitted to the B O C C.
Good call. I forgot to mention that. So yes, for the original, original public hearing, the comments would be here. I need to check with Moshi to make sure that our comments that are received to us could then be forwarded and be used as evidence to the Planning Commission or whether there'd need to be new comments to the Planning Commission. I can't imagine that they wouldn't be forwarded as evidence for the Planning Commission, but I need to double check that.
So is there a particular email address that people would use to submit the comments?
B O C C for now.
And it will be advertised in the newspaper, correct?
Yep. Mr. Anderson, I'll go back to you and see if you have any responses for anything.
Mr. Wagner, you have heard multiple times from the board and from previous boards about the county's policies in, with regards to short-term rentals. It's pretty obvious, they've said it, the previous boards have said it, we're following those policies. You have a very clear and very personal feud against me. It's obvious, look to your right. You're showing it off to everyone online. If you'd like, you can stand with your sign and I can get a picture for you because apparently that's what you're looking for is notoriety. If you'd like, I can come down and I'll even sign it for you.
Keep your decorum. I want them to have decorum. I want us to have decorum too.
And as you stated, Commissioner Christopher, with regards to public comment, because I take that as public comment. One of those on there is, if you could read it again, is derogatory, demeaning comments. I don't know about you, but I think that qualifies. And so, yeah, Mr. Wagner, if you'd like, I can read your most, one of your most recent emails aloud about decorum and communication. And I made it very clear multiple times over that I will not communicate with you if you continue to treat people like that, whether it's in email, whether it's in meetings, whatever. I will just stop responding to everything that you have to say. Now, with regards to your statement of violating RCW 423070, subpart four, it says, no municipal officer may disclose confidential information gained by reasons of the officer's position, nor may the officer otherwise use information for his own personal gain or benefit. I have not done that in any time. And when I read your email, because you love to make accusations and put it out there, and all I stated, and this was regard to the Supreme Court taking up the Track D litigation. And I said, the Supreme Court has been siding with tribal nations of late. There was a lot of discussion in the executive session about what our odds of being heard were and then what of our odds of winning are. We are still moving forward with the appeal to the Supreme Court and I support the decision of my seatmates. I did not disclose what our odds were. I did not disclose anything. So let's just be honest and clear about that. And with your statement that you went back and I spent a lot of this weekend going back through everything from 2021, your statement that I voted in favor of a moratorium on the 10-year RV projects. If you go back and you watch the video and you look at it, we didn't take a vote on it. What I did is I seconded a motion in order to have discussion because Dan made a motion and I wanted to discuss it. That does not mean that I was in favor of the moratorium. I did not vote for a moratorium. In fact, if you go back there and watch it, you can hear that I say I'm usually, almost always against moratoriums. So if you're going to make these accusations and statements, I would hope that you would actually look at the facts of what happened back then because I went back through it. And with that, I'm sorry, but you're not going to get a rise out of me. You're not going to get me to act in an untoward ways. I will not belittle myself. And I, I warned you many, many times that I will stop responding to this. And I will. You bring up many good questions. You bring up many good points, things that we've dealt with. But some things just are inappropriate. And I hope you look back and think about that in the future.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Anderson. I will pick this opportunity to speak again, not to publicly chastise Mr. Wagner in any way, but I will say that you, you get more, catch more flies with honey than you do a baseball bat. And I think you've had me say that before. I think sometimes in, in how you act, you, you actually turn people off and you hurt the cause. So if the cause is the most thing important to you, like it is for me, I would just actually get to do some soul searching and reflecting and see which way helps the cause. So with that, I'll leave it. If you want future conversation, let me know. With that, it is 1:30 and we will move on. No unfinished business. So we will move on to miscellaneous reports and committees. We have a by-state working group for the replacement of the Hood River White Salmon Bridge update with project director Michael Shannon and port of Hood River executive director Kevin Greenwood. Please step forward, gentlemen.
Push the button to talk or?
Green is good.
Green is good, okay.
Green is good.
Great, well, thank you very much for the opportunity to come to you today. My name is Kevin Greenwood. I'm the executive director at the Port of Hood River. And to my right is Michael Shannon. He's the project director for the bridge replacement project, also with the Port of Hood River. Mike is with the H and TB, which is a consulting firm that really provides technical services to the by-state working group to move the project forward. So as Mike's bringing up his presentation, I do want to call out Commissioner Anderson, his active involvement as the vice chair of the by-state working group. As you may know, the working group was established about three years ago. It's made up of representatives from Clickittack County, the cities of Benjen and White Salmon on the Washington side. And then on the Oregon side, we have Hood River County, the Port of Hood River and the city of Hood River. And really the goal is to ensure that the new replacement bridge adequately and equally represents both sides of the Columbia River as the new bridge is replaced. One of the things that, that we really want to bring forward is the, is really the charter document that will create the new bridge authority. That was passed in legislation in both Olympia and Salem to allow counties to form a new by-state bridge authority. And so we have been through four variations of the commission formation agreement. And I think we're getting very close to having that finalized. Our hope is to bring that to the six parties in the next, you know, I'd say probably four to five weeks for your consideration and an adoption. At that point, the new bridge authority would be established, but there won't be any board members yet. There will then be a subsequent process where a resolution to appoint the three members based upon nominees from the cities, the two cities in the county here on the Washington side. That process would then place the Washington members on the new bridge authority. Hopefully that can still get done by the first part of July. But then at that point on, the Port of Hood River will be out of the bridge replacement business. And we will certainly be there to provide administrative services to the new bridge authority like we are now. But the bridge authority will be making the decisions moving forward. Trying to kill a little time here.
Start talking slower. Like eventually one of us are going to get out of our chair and go down and help him out.
We're getting there, we're getting there, technology.
But no, I think that, you know, just as a 20-year public administrator, just to kill a little time here, I, you know, I got to say that when I first started working on this project as a Port of Hood River employee in 2017, there was a lot of opposition to the port. And if you recall, there were a series of votes that were taken when we first.
Oh, you got to turn off your audio. And it may not allow it. You might have to exit Zoom and then come back without your audio. When it asks if you want to join with commuter audio, just say no. Otherwise you get mic-to-mic interference, which is what that is.
Yep.
Yep.
Got it.
I know, this is, today we all have to be IT gurus too, don't we?
But just for the two newer, newer members, when we initially asked for support from the three, we actually were rejected, if you remember that. There were. For support from the three, we actually were rejected, if you remember that, there were votes taken to not participate. And then it wasn't till we really reached out to Dave Souter and Dave Poucher and others. That we really started building this rapport back up, and I think that really, in twenty years, I think that the. Relationship building that's occurred between Clickattack County communities and Hood River County communities has. Really been pretty impressive to see, what has really been kind of a, a difficult relationship, and I think that there's now consensus on how. How this project will, will move forward, so with that.
I think we're ready.
I'll hand that over to, to Mike.
All right, we're ready to go, sorry about that. So the, we want to just update you on the project and kind of the current status of where we are. And so this year, we anticipate to finish up the environmental impact statement. Finalizing that and finalizing the record of decision, which will complete the NEPA process for the project. That's been going on for a number of years, we're down to the final couple steps on that. Getting through the biological opinion, which ODOT is leading and developing. They had some, some recent events that, that we had to go back and do some edits based on some, some. Some activities they had on current projects that are going on, that they wanted us to make some revisions to ours. So we made those revisions, that's all been back to ODOT, and we expect them to be able to get through the biological opinion within the next month, two months. The other piece is the section one oh six memorandum of agreement, that's been sent to FHWA and is in their legal review. And one of the last pieces is the memorandum of, of agreement with the four treaty tribes. Those four treaties, MOAs for the treaty tribes have been drafted and sent to ODOT. The four tribes is the Yakima Nation, Yumatilla, Warm Springs, and the Ness Purse. So those should be, we expect in the next week to two weeks going to those four tribes.
Have you heard a lot of opposition from them on a new bridge or anything?
They actually have been very supportive, we actually have a letter of support from the Yakima Nation for the project. We're working through the same thing with Ness, Ness Purse. And Yumatilla, Warm Springs has been the one that's, they just have not responded. So FHWA actually sent them a letter requesting them to come to the table for the government to government discussions. So we're hoping to hear from them soon and can start those discussions, they were active when the NEPA was going on and. We think it's just a matter of formality to go back and ask them, so we're in the process of doing that, but. So our project, we were brought on in July to help the port run the project and kind of move the project forward. So a couple of the items that we've started on is we're advancing survey, they're actually out there now collecting some of the. Existing ground DTM's, existing utilities, setting up right of way lines. And then also geotechnical work, so February sixth, we will actually start the borings for. Some of the on land borings on the Oregon side, and then later this spring we'll do, we have one on land boring on the Washington side, and then this summer we'll be doing ten. In water borings, and that is really just to collect data. To inform the project as we start to get into the form, the final design. We're also looking at right of way, there's some right of way elements for right of entries for the geotech and. A couple parcels that we need to look at potentially. Easements, permanent easements and temporary easements from, so we're starting that, that work also, and then also the permitting work. Just re-engaging with some of the agencies that have not been contacted for a number of years, we did have some follow up conversations with the Coast Guard and the Army Corps. We have preliminary approval on our vertical clearance and horizontal clearances from the Coast Guard. We were able to confirm that they don't see any issues that would change that at this point, so we're confident that that'll continue to move forward. We also, just in January, made a recommendation to move forward with the pro, the project delivery method as a progressive design build. And just a little bit on progressive design build, it's, it's similar to a design, a mix between a design build project and a. What they call CMGC, and what we, what we will do is bring the designer and the contractor in as a single team. Early on in the process, like at the five percent stage, and then work with them hand in hand. To develop the project as we move forward, so that there's no surprises when we go to construction, the contractors already had input into the design and. Basically, it allows us to allocate risk and work through the risk elements and understand those before we go to construction. So that process will be starting to procure that final designer and final contractor this year. With the goal of determining a early construction project in two thousand and twenty-five. And then with all the, with us, if we obtain all the funding, we believe we can have the project finished and open by two thousand and twenty-nine. So on the funding, the, the current cost estimate for the project is right at five hundred million dollars plus inflation, that, that cost was done in two thousand and twenty-one. With the current inflation rates being where they are, it's, it's, we believe a little more than. Than that number, I say a little more, it's about twenty million dollars a year. In every year that we weigh is with the inflation rates that we're currently seeing, so the quicker we can get to the project, the cheaper the project will be. The committed funding on the project right now, there's a two thousand and seventeen planning grant from Oregon. That funding has been completely spent during the NEPA process. We also have another Oregon grant through, was done through ARPA, there's five million on that grant, there's a Washington planning grant of five million. And then a US DOT planning grant through the build, the build process. That is another five million, so right now we're working off of that fifteen million in those three grants. There's about fourteen million of that fifteen million remaining, and then we have seventy-five million that Washington allocated. But has not aged that yet, and we're hoping through this legislative session that we will see that, that aging. In the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-five bienniums. Getting that funding early will allow us then to move forward with the, the schedule that we were just looking at. Ultimately, we would like to see a hundred and twenty-five million from Washington, a hundred and twenty-five million from Oregon. Roughly two hundred million from the federal government. We've asked for that money through a number of different sources, knowing that you're not know, going to know exactly how much you're going to get from different locations. We've, we've asked for a hundred and ninety-five million on the, what they call MPDG grants, which makes up three different grants, which is your infra grant or rural grant and your mega grant. We qualify for all threes, we're submitting under all three, and then the bridge investment program for a hundred million. And then we're also looking at a couple smaller grants, which is the Raze Planning Grant. And the Safe Streets for All Grants, and those would be geared more towards the bike pit transit components of the project. And then to round out the, the total funding would be based on a local contribution, which would. Be leveraging the toll revenues through some type of government loan, like a Tiffy loan. Somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty to a hundred million, depending on the, the funding we receive from the, the state and federal government, so.
I would assume there would be something in the, the contract that all toll money collected has to be used towards. Future upkeep of the bridge and can't be used on some other project or something.
That is correct, and we're going to actually get into that right now, the, the new by state bridge commission that will ultimately own the new bridge. Will be responsible for the tolling that's on that bridge, and all funds. Collected on the new bridge will stay with the new bridge and be used on the bridge, both to pay. Any existing debt that we need to take out to build the bridge, as well as then setting up funding for future maintenance operations and, and. You know, the additional replacements down the road. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin to talk about the by state bridge commission.
Sure, so the by state working group, which Commissioner Anderson was involved with, determined that the. Best ownership management entity would be a local government by state entity. The problem was, is one, there wasn't any legal construct that would allow that to occur. So with the by state working group and Steve Siegel, who was the lead consultant. They worked on developing this legislation, it was passed with near unanimous support by both states. And as I was mentioning at the beginning, this bill requires that a commission formation agreement. Be adopted by the participating parties, that is like a charter, if you will, the commission formation agreement. So we're getting pretty close to bringing that to you for approval, I would say probably within the next four to six weeks, that should be coming to you. And as part of that, there. The board appointments come from the two counties. And so as this slide shows, there's three from Clickattack, three from Hood River, those are staggered four year terms. And in order for those appointments to occur, there needs to be a resolution. Setting the procedures and criteria for those appointments, right now, I think Hood, Hood River County has been working on their resolution, and then I, I believe. Commissioner Anderson is working with Hood River Commissioner Babitz to take a look at that and see how much of that will be applicable for Clickattack County. So whatever, there could be some slight differences between the Hood River resolution and the Clickattack County resolution based upon a whole number. Of things, but frankly, it doesn't really matter, at the end of the day, each county will appoint. Their representatives and they will make up the six member board of the new bridge authority. So one of the interesting components of this legislation is the concept of the primary place of business. And the easiest way to think about this is which laws, which states laws are going to be really the backdrop for the new government. So, so we're really looking at, we did a survey and had an analysis done. By our consultant Steve Siegel, but he actually hired a consultant that works with the Washington State Transportation Commission. And they did a memo on looking at all of the financial situations for a new government and where it would be the most affordable. And hence keep the tolls a little bit lower based upon the, the lower expenses. And it initially has looked at the, that the financing and the financial issues. Really, Oregon is more advantageous for that issue. However, there were also political concerns because of the port being the owner of the old bridge, there were obvious political issues that might. Be more, more prominent than those, just those financial concerns. And so the analysis took all of these criteria into consideration, and then the by state working group. Had many lengthy debates about this issue, they were going to make a determination on this topic about a week ago. They were, they were told, they agreed to come back on the twenty-third to settle this issue once and for all. But one thing that should be noted. That even if the location is in Oregon, that doesn't mean that there can't be an administrative office in Clickattack County. It's just that that office would be run and the budgeting and the auditing and everything would happen through the Oregon rules. Not the Washington State rules, even though the office is in, in Bingen or White Salmon. It looks likely, we're, we're taking a little bit of liberty there by saying that the location will be in Oregon, we're anticipating. That that is where it will be, but we won't know for sure until the twenty-third. So on the screen here is really kind of a calendar of what you can expect over the next. Few weeks and for the rest of the year, there's current review, I think we're on version four of the CFA. We're hoping to get those final comments here in the next week so that we can draft that up for the working group's final review. And then once the by state working group feels that that is a document that they can, everybody can take back to their boards, we plan on doing that. So I'm thinking in mid-February, March, that there will be an agenda item, action item for your board to adopt the commission formation agreement. Which after all six parties do so, then the new bridge authority exists. And then we've got about two, two and a half months for the commission, or for the county commissions to appoint representatives. We're, so we're shooting for July one, but it might be August, just depending on everybody's work calendars. So we do have an official name, that was made at the last meeting, it is. The Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority, I think we looked at about eight or twelve different names, and that was the one that received the most votes, and so that will be. Codified in the commission formation agreement, and will be the name of the new, the new entity.
Is the new bridge still going to be caused, called the Hood River Bridge?
That has not been determined.
That's up to the six people that we appointed.
Exactly right.
Well, the, the, the existing bridge will still continue to be there, and frankly, I don't know if there's ever really been a formal name for the, the current bridge, but. It'll obviously be up and running, the port will continue to manage that project or the bridge, it's not really a project, but just the ongoing maintenance. Until the new bridge is up and done, at which point the current, current bridge will be demolished about two to three years after the open date. Is that our last line?
That was it, so, any questions on?
Or, or Commissioner Anderson, you, you've been intimately involved with this process, so.
You guys hit it top to bottom, how do you add anything to that?
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking, but I was going to bring you up. In saying, when I ran for this seat two years ago. People would always ask, you know, when are we going to get a new bridge, when are we going to get it, I'm like, I might be alive when it happens. In the fact that it's, it's gone this far in two years, and this is where you come in. I was going to thank you for your diligent work. On this board and going back to DC and meeting with our representatives and whatnot, getting this going, it's. It's beyond my wildest dreams in two years' time. Any comments from me during my seat?
Technically, we've only been working on it for, you know, twenty-five years.
Jake, I don't know if you want to maybe give a shout out to Senator King and his involvement, I mean, I, I kind of feel like this project really wouldn't be here without what he's done.
Well, we definitely, well, we definitely wouldn't be moving forward at the speed we are. Based on the, you know, the seventy million that Senator King has got, and he's continued to push it. Every chance at the state level, he's going to try again for another fifty million this go around to push up, ours up to a hundred and twenty-five, because. The feds are not, the feds love to be the last dollars in.
Right.
And so in order for, to get that point, we've got to get Oregon to step up to the plate, and if we can get everything from Washington and get it appointed. Because right now you can see from that slide about the, the speed that it's moving forward, I mean, the environmental, you know, SE, EIS and all that, but when you. You look at some of those things, the engineering is going to be thirty plus million dollars on this project, and you can see from, you know, the grants that we have. We've got to get some of that Washington money released now, so that we can go out, we can, we can get to the procurement on the, the design contract. But until we get the money that's going, that we know is going to be released, we'd be fools to actually move forward on that, and so. As long as, as long as we can keep the dollars coming in at the right times, this is a very viable timeline. When you look at, you know, if you're held up on EIS or you, or you just don't get the money, you know, in twenty-four, twenty-five. You figure for every year that it gets pushed out, just inflation alone is twenty million dollars more money you need. I mean, that's how large of a project, twenty million dollars.
It's speculating, sorry to interrupt you, sir, speculating is part of the reason why Oregon's kind of slow in funding. Where we're still getting Washington money is Oregon's focused on I five bridge, which seems to be the exact opposite. They're throwing money in and Washington's like, we really don't want your bridge.
I think that's, I think that's fair, I think the last transportation package that was passed in Oregon was in two thousand and seventeen. That's how we got that first five million to do the NEPA process, they tend to do transportation packages every seven years. And so we have been cautioned about trying to position our bridge in opposition to any other bridges out there. And so, you know.
Tell them you'll design yours at the correct heights or ship.
We're going to get ours done before they even get their NEPA finished.
Right, I mean, this is like the third draft of them trying to build a bridge tall enough to get a boat underneath, so.
I, I think the issue with, with Oregon is there, there, there needs to be pent up demand statewide in local government, county government. For there to be a new transportation package that doesn't just address I five. And, and I think that if it doesn't happen this year, it's going to happen in the next two years, but unfortunately, it, it doesn't. It doesn't help us where we need it right now, and that's where I think, you know, we're very thankful to Senator King and the entire state of Washington for what they've done to. Keep this position where it is today.
And some of what we've heard is that, that's been some discussions on the Oregon side, is that they want to fund more than just the I five bridge that they see a need to. You know, not dump all of their eggs in that one basket, that there's more needs across their state than just that.
Well, and I guess that's me, if there's an emergency, a natural emergency, natural disaster, port is going down, I think, he was going down, it's all built on silt.
Yep.
Your bridge, your bridge is not going to be useful, you're going to have to drive up here across the bridge and get emergency supplies back to you, so. So how about you build us a bridge? We can get you your emergency supplies, so.
Yep.
I'm lecturing. I'm sorry. I'll shut up.
No, and I'd like to say thank you for all your effort. Projects are crazy, but this many partners, I can't even imagine. Just the coordination of it all to get everybody to work together.
Well, and what's been great is that, you know, everybody at the table right now is all, understands the need for it and they're all very supportive of it. And literally funding is the only thing keeping this job from going. There's really nothing else in our way, so. Try a couple tribal MOAs, you know.
That was my first question.
That's all stuff that can be worked out.
I guess the last thing I'd just say is that, you know, Kevin came on originally to work on, you know, the project manager for the bridge. And he did such a good job that he's now the executive director for the port. And we all wish him well and wish him the best and sorry you got demoted.
Now I got to figure out where to make up three and a half million dollars a year and.
Yeah. But that's, we, we've got a lot of faith in him and he's doing an absolutely spectacular job. And, and with HNTB and Michael coming online, I mean, it's just, you can tell by their presentation, like, they know what they're doing.
I'm not.
Yeah, we're working with professionals here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Nothing further? Nothing further? Thank you gentlemen for your presentation.
Have a great day.
Thank you.
Did we unshare the Zoom over there? Do you need to unshare on your laptop? Or am I still seeing your screen? There we go. Alrighty, we are pretty much right on schedule, 2 o'clock. Commissioner Zoller wanted to discuss strategic planning. So I will turn it over to Commissioner Zoller.
Thank you. So I passed you a packet with just a short version of some things that I've found in the recent months. I do have a, a passion for organization and coordination and working well together as a team. And when I went to Olympia for training in December, four days was all focused around strategic planning that year from WASAC. And how crucial it is that we operate as a board and as executives and being able to work well with our, our directors and everybody understanding who they are, how they function. And several of the counties had gone through strategic planning. And we've done some strategic planning, but it's usually based on economics or land use planning. And so I came back with the passion to bring that back with me from Olympia. And coming up next week while I'm talking to you today, Commissioner Janik from Skagit County has committed to be on our agenda and bring a Zoom about what their experiences were and what it did for their county to go through county executive and director strategic planning. And that will help us set a five to a 10 year term. It didn't take them long to do it. They did have help from a contractor to do it. It only lasted a couple of days, but they created a really great document out of it. So everybody knew who they were, what's expected of them and how they worked together. And since I've been watching this and looking at it over the last few weeks, Jen Bartley from our finance department has been on the same mission, but for the budgets. And it really makes sense to combine both those efforts. If she's going to try to help the county embark on that, I would like to see us enter into it, combine our efforts, maybe even putting the budget portion of it at the forefront and then merging us in with the budget. Because it always all comes back to money and we want to manage it well. We want to go, do a good job as employees of the people to manage that money. I'm encouraged by the strategic planning that Ms. Janik has done because it also, Commissioner Janik has done. It also helps build the relationships between the partners. And that's important to me, that we understand what our roles are as executive. We understand our daily work and how we work with other executives. And then we're able to communicate and work with the directors in a better way so they can work with their employees. And I wanted to give you this packet today just so you could have a little window into what Ms. Janik will talk about next week. And then also being able.
And it's next week on Tuesday, not Thursday? Tuesday?
Tuesday. She's actually on our agenda, I understand, for a Zoom with us. Do you have questions of me?
Do you have questions or do you want, I kind of was going to let our finance manager Jen speak her piece on strategic planning before we, we got into questions. If you have any piece on budgetary strategic planning.
I, I got a question. So did you pull this all off of Skagit Counties? Strategic plan?
The first, the first few pages are, are off of their plan.
Okay, so.
And it is available online. It's only 38 pages. It's not a huge document. And I took just some of the crucial points of why they did it and what it looked like, just so you could get a snapshot.
So the reason I ask is, is because on the goals and strategies, five to 10 years, it doesn't say Skagit, it says Jefferson Counties?
That was the last page. I took another snapshot. And in the front cover page, I explained that I gave you one more example from Jefferson County.
Okay.
So it isn't just Skagit County that's been through this. Other counties have too.
I think it's, it's probably everybody but us. If I had to go check. You have to turn your mic on, sir. I'm going to be the mic Nazi.
Let's not use that. Remember you're supposed to fix that?
It's working, see? Jefferson County is, I've talked to their folks. They're currently redoing theirs as well and they have a consultant to help them do that, so.
Any budgetary number that you gleaned from them?
I've been part of these many times, many employers. The most recent, I think we spent $25,000 to, it would be like a WASAC plan. It was for the Oregon version of, of WASAC. So it, it can vary depending on how much. It can be less than that if you just need them to help you kind of get started. And if you want them to be involved all the way through the process, mediate, facilitate, help you, you know, surveys, community surveys, those kinds of things. It can, it can cost a little bit more. So really no one fixed number, depends what you're looking for, what kind of assistance. A lot of good firms out there that can help though.
You were, you were actually recommended earlier. Don't point at me. I'm not even looking at you.
I just. Most employers I've worked at have done some form of strategic plan. Since there hasn't been one here in terms of the scope that Commissioner Zoller is looking at versus comprehensive plan or economic development plan or road plan, it, it's helpful to have a third party assist you to get started. I've been in meetings where we spent eight hours just talking about, is an objective a goal or goal a task? Is a task two years or four years or eight years? You know, because there's, you know, so sometimes just to get through the minutia, to get to the important stuff, it's helpful to have that third party help.
And that's a little bit personal. Rob has to work with us all every day.
I apologize to him often.
So he may need that buffer and then be able to move on and work with us with the strategic plan.
It's truly a group effort. County government's complicated. It's easier for a city or a college or an association to do it because they're, you know, their mission's a little bit, or it's a little bit more narrow. Where the county governments.
I don't know, but if everybody's done it, I see a lot of cut and paste.
Well, in format and, and that kind of stuff, yeah. But in the, in the, you know, what's important to you, that's really, that's the personal piece.
Part of it is the, is, is the document, but part of it is building the document. Part of it is the, the teamwork and allegiance that's formed in getting those partners and other electeds at the table to not just create a document that's thrust upon them. But to get them involved. And if you get them involved, you get them buying in and to where they're actually going to make.
And like Jenna and I were talking, if you choose to include public through surveys and information like that, it's not too much different than the comprehensive plan in terms of scope and size and amount of work and.
I'm feeling a little angry today. Any other questions, comments? As I said, I'm, I'm real curious to hear Commissioner Janik's presentation next week. And then I'm sure we'll have more discussion and.
Yeah, she was very convincing in the time I spent with her in Olympia. And I just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of updated and came into it with an open mind about where that could take us and, and help us align with the budget to drive that budget.
I think without knowing where you're going, how can you plan, financially plan to get there? Is my perspective on it.
And how do you know when you arrive? We never arrive. This, this, this train just keeps rolling down the tracks, whether we wanted to or not.
In a happier workplace, I think if people can come into work and know what's expected of them and who their superiors are and who they answer to and where they go for help, having that all lined out is very important.
I like the idea of, of the goals, short-term goals, long-term goals, timelines, accountability. You know, hey, we want to get to here. In order to get to there, you got to do your baby steps. And are you doing your baby steps on time? I, I think we're going to need that moving forward.
And I think if you look at other plans, interesting to see what Commissioner Janik says. But if you look at the Jefferson County one, typically you're at the 50 to 100,000 foot mark. Public safety may be a goal. And then, so it's written in such a way is that different sheriffs, different electeds, different department directors can, can move different programs to achieve, achieve the goal. So it's not so restrictive. You don't want people to fear that the commissioners are going to set the strategic plan for.
That's why I said they need to be involved. So there's a partnership and there's multiple people pushing it.
Right.
Right.
And a lot of what we do is statutorily driven, especially in the elected offices. And so sometimes there's some discretion, sometimes there's not. But, but if you, if your, if your goals, short-term or long-term are high enough that, that allows people to, to backfill the, how you're going to get there, then everybody has a say.
I, I have a plan sitting on my desk right now. That is, it's four main goals. Four main priorities and then it kind of dives down throughout the plan within those four priorities. Just some, you don't really have to get. And, and it was advised at my training going through strategic planning, not, not to get down deep in the woods, in the weeds there, to really keep it high level. So it's adaptive.
I'm going to do my homework and read the Jefferson and Skagit plans. So I have questions to, for Mrs. Janik.
Perfect.
Thank you for bringing this to us.
Yeah, I agree. I know enough to be dangerous. So I need to know a little more and then hopefully sit through her presentation and gain a little more and, and then we'll, I'm sure have for future discussions.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else on this topic? Talked yourself half an hour for that. You've got 19 more minutes. Keep talking.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the consent agenda with 18 items. If that works for you guys, I was thinking about pulling some for discussion, but.
We have a motion on a consent. Do we have a second?
I can second.
Okay, you have a discussion.
Hold on, let me get back to it. My computer always stops.
The only one I had a question about was sheriff's vehicles who are signed up for $195 a year for Sirius satellite radio.
What?
Right? I'm like, wait a minute. But I'm assuming that's, I'm assuming I wish we had the right sheriff's deputy in the room to ask the question. I would imagine that's just all new trucks have a deal with Sirius and that's what you get and it's a six month term. And after six months, you got to sign up for it. And you don't get a choice to not do it in your new vehicle purchase. So, but I didn't get the opportunity to ask that question.
So by turning these in now for the sheriff's trucks, are we getting further ahead in our schedule? Or are we back on to where we need to be? Do we know how long out these things are expected to be?
As far as, it's my understanding that as long as they get three vehicles at some point, by the end of this year, we are on schedule. They were just going earlier than scheduled last year. They were jumping the gun.
Well, didn't we?
They're actually back on track. The vehicles that they ordered last year, which were the Dodge Rams, due to the COVID and, and the distribution slowness and all that, everything got all messed up. They were able to get the Tompos because they were actually on the lot. So they came in and asked the board, they just swapped the orders. So the, and they do historically do their acquisitions in February, January, early.
Right, so.
The dog is that they tried, they came in early last year and said they had to order because they wouldn't be able to get vehicles next year. And that's where they got the permission.
That was for last year.
That was for this year. They couldn't get those trucks. So the year expired in 2022, 2023 started. The dealership said they had to fill out a new form because it's 2023. That's what we're doing. The same thing that they were approved for the end of last year is the same thing we're doing today, just filling out a new form.
So we had the trucks ordered for 2022?
We had them ordered for 2023 in 2024.
No, they were ordered for 2022, I thought. The original order was for the trucks. And they said at the end, we're not going to get them, but we've got some here. For 2023. So that should have been the purchase authorization for this year where what we bought that were the Tahos, right? So we bought, we, we bought some trucks because at the end we were like, well, we hope the trucks don't come in in 2020. We hope the trucks don't come in in 2022. Otherwise we'll have trucks and Tahos. And so is these trucks for 2024 then?
No, these are 20, these are the ones we were hoping wouldn't come in. We just had to write a new contract to get them. And we still haven't got them.
I'm sorry, you do have to have authorization each year. The other one expired.
Right.
So this is, is reaffirming that.
So this is for the 2022 trucks?
Yes.
These are for the February ask that they decided to ask in November for the February ask because they had to order them early because they couldn't get trucks. Or whatever that reasoning was.
Well, no, we bought the, we bought the Tahos.
That was, that was last year's batch. This is the 2023 batch. They wanted to order them early because they weren't supposed to be able to order them in 2023. Whatever that story is. The Tahoe exchange was the 2022 vehicles.
But we still had ordered the, the trucks.
We ordered the trucks at the end of last year and they shouldn't have been ordered until February. But they ordered them early.
I believe that these trucks, which this authorization is for these trucks, they were actually ordered early last year in '22. But the supply chain and all that has caused it to delay. So they should be coming in any time.
These trucks should be coming in any time, but they're the 2022 trucks that we switched out for the Tahoe.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Yeah, leave that.
So I think the question is, is are we building or expanding our fleet? And to me, the answer is no, as long as the two, whatever they are explorers or whatever they're getting rid of and, and a truck that they're replacing, go to surplus or the truck goes to code compliance or something, as long as they're not building their empire of vehicles.
Well, and what, it's not whether they're building it, it's whether we're flipping vehicles out of it that are not set to be flipped. That's my problem is.
Part of the Tahos was to help us accelerate the interceptors.
Right.
Out of the fleet.
That was the position of the board last year, correct?
Well, and we're going to get a twenty twenty-four request, but I don't think we've talked about what that's going to replace.
They, they replace in groups.
Yes.
They, they replace in groups and have them cycled out as to which one's operating.
And so far we know which ones.
And this group replaces two interceptors and I think a Dodge fifteen hundred, might be a Chevy fifteen hundred. What it says in the board packet anyway. I'd see talking about Sirius Satellite Radio brings up all sorts of.
Well, that was gonna be the thing that I wanted to talk about. Because I didn't know if you don't get the trucks at the end of the year, you have to redo the authorization. I did not. So that's good to know and I'll forget it later.
Right. I resemble that remark.
That was the only one. And everybody, you, everybody understands number eighteen, the management agreement, did Jeff.
Airport.
Okay. Nobody has any issues. All right. I'm, that's all my discussion.
No discussion over here, I'm assuming?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. We have a motion and a second on the agenda, approving the agenda with all eighteen items. Uh, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Uh, we'll now pay the bills.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the accounts payable warrants in the amount of ninety-five thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty-three cents with no payroll benefit or warrants for the date ending January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a second?
I will second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pay the twenty twenty-three bills. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes. Twenty twenty-two bills.
Says twenty twenty-three, is it okay?
The other one, yeah.
They both.
Well, one is actually twenty twenty-three bills, one's twenty twenty-two. We're just paying them both in twenty twenty-three.
And so, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to pay the twenty twenty-two bills, accounts payable warrants in the amount of three hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and sixty-six cents and payroll benefits and warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred and thirty thousand, five hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighteen cents for the date ending January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to pay the other bills. All those in favor of paying bills, um, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, ma'am. And we'll do the signing of those and then we'll put them back.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
You want these back in the box when we get done signing or just leave them on top or does it matter? There you go.
Okay.
All right. Bills are paid. Finance Committee update, Treasurer Greg Gallagher, are you ready for us, sir? Come on down. You're the next contestant on The Price is Right.
Oh, good. The county is right. Okay.
With the treasurer, the price is always right.
Good afternoon. Uh, here to report on, we had our first finance committee meeting of twenty twenty-three. It was last Friday, the thirteenth. The first meeting on the agenda was just to confirm that the dates and times work. So we did that. Everybody agreed the second and fourth Friday. Worked for everybody's schedule, so we'll continue to, that will continue to be the schedule it has been, but we just validate with the new folks. We had a discussion about Fund One Ten, the auditor. Um, this is, uh, the Veterans Fund. The auditor brought up and wondered kind of how it was there and would like to look at that. So we'll probably have that on the next agenda. But basically that's the, when the property taxes are assessed, there's a portion that goes to current expense and then there's a veteran service or a veterans fund, uh, mental health, I think, and road. Um, and so anyway, she was wondering about that. So Heather was gonna do some research and bring that back. So we had a bit of a question of just how that got there and it all happened before we got there. So it'll be good education. E-signatures, we went back and revisited that. We thought that that was done in twenty twenty-two, but it didn't get actually before the board and approved. So Heather is going to, I think it's already submitted to the P A for review. Um, and hopefully that will be on the next, I've reported on that, that the finance committee has agreed that we think it's a good policy, recommends to the board to adopt it. I think I did that back. I don't know when in twenty twenty-two, but, um, it didn't get all the way on the agenda. So we're working on trying to get that done. Mental health, uh, we talked about another auditor, uh, question of the funds that are in Fund One Thirty-eight, which is a mental health fund that was the.
Developmental disabilities.
Developmental dis, thank you. Yep. Um, that was the, uh, money that One Thirty-seven is the health fund and One Thirty-eight is the developmental disabilities. They had separated them out. There's a balance in there we have not used and the question was just what could those funds be used for? So Heather was going to pull some documentation, auditor's office and we'll have some questions about that because there's obviously other mental health, developmental, just, you know, what pieces and parts match that. So. Um, and I think that's a carryover from our last year's discussion with those parts. Staff, uh, updates, we had no staff updates. The auditor reported that she has met with T D J C P A, which is the CPA firm we use to compile the financial statements for their first twenty twenty-two, working on the twenty twenty-two audit. Um, her office is working on the ten ninety-nines and the W twos and her chief deputy will start on January thirty-first. Those are per my notes, just in case I didn't write it down correctly, but I think I did. And, uh, I updated that, uh, our office has been working pretty much, uh, on just year end and, um, December month and year end activities. Um, we've been working, uh, closely with the Pam and Public Works and Heather and Nicole to try to get Kianta rolled forward. And I think we were successful with that today. So we can move on to twenty twenty-three and continue to do our work. Um, the next finance committee meeting is scheduled for January twenty-seventh at nine AM. I don't, is there any questions or things that I forgot?
I wasn't there. No, and nothing you forgot, other than developmental disabilities.
Yep. I don't remember all the funds. I know the numbers, but sometimes I don't know the names.
That's like the only one I did know.
So yes.
No, that was it. Um, good luck, Mr. Sir.
Yep. All right. Thank you. You guys have a good one.
Thank you.
Mr. McClure, do you have anything for us sitting in the back of the room?
Nope.
You go, Mr., uh, Mr. H R, any, no, no, finance, nobody, nothing? Okay. Nobody has nothing. Do any other board pending my seatmates have to?
Yeah, I got one that I spent some time on this weekend and I know the last thing we probably want to talk about is solar or solar moratoriums or anything to do with solar right now. But, you know, I'd, I'd asked the question last week or, yeah, last week about, um, getting a P A's opinion request. And, uh, Chairman, you said that you were not in favor of holding it up in order to get a P A's opinion request and holding it up for a couple of weeks. But, um, I think it would be a really good idea to get a P A's opinion request. And found out that it takes the board's decision to do it and I, we, each of us can't just do it. On some of those questions that I raised last week in terms of, there was the disagreement between you and I on, uh, whose interpretation was right. Neither of us are attorneys. But I think we could definitely, uh, ask the county attorney on their interpretation. Um, and I think that would be good for the hearing if we have the county's, uh, county attorney's interpretation on whether or not the, uh, moratorium will hold water with regards to FSEC and their expediting, expediting process and more importantly, their land use consistency determination.
So it sounds like you have multiple questions that you would like attorney to ask, some just based on legality of the moratorium and others that are more based on land use that I would imagine since our county attorney is not a land use attorney, that we would need to potentially hire outside counsel like a Foster Pepper to give us legal counsel on land use. Is that your recommendation or you want the prosecutor to give legal deposition of land use?
The prosecutor would, if he can't answer the question, then he would come back to us and say, I can't answer this question. But it's either valid, I either think it's valid or not valid. And then we could find outside counsel or something else. If, uh, there are any issues, we also have access to, um, counsel for our, if, in case if we did something wrong or how we passed the, the ordinance, we could also, um, ask the counsel for our, insurance fund. They've got counsel as well. I know Skamania County uses the counsel for the insurance fund on a regular basis. And it's something we've never really kind of done that I can think of.
Prosecutor's still gotta sign off on it.
Of course.
M R S C's got counsel you can use too.
That's exactly where I was going with this is that if we send it, the questions to the prosecutor and the prosecutor doesn't have the answers, then it would be, he could direct that outside that hopefully won't cost us anything.
I guess what I would prefer to see if we're gonna go that route is a detailed list of the questions. Actually throw the five questions in front of me in the correct wording, uh, and then that is what we submit, not an open-ended blanket statement.
Well, so this is, because I spent the whole weekend watching all of our videos and everything for twenty twenty-one since we're just, you know, repeating what's happened in the past. But this one came up, um, that worried me. And it's in, this is our, our minutes from March ninth of twenty twenty-three and in it, sorry, I think I got a couple extra copies.
I would also advise that everything we say in this room could be, um, applied in a court of law. So, threatening litigation should not necessarily be brought up by the actual board member who's supposed to be defending the county. But, so I would just caution the way you bring about these things to make sure they don't cause litigation by your statements. But anyway, continue.
I don't understand what you mean. They ca, how would they cause? I'm only asking the questions. I'm not making the statements.
Yes and no. So I, I mean, this is not a question for the prosecuting attorney, the one you highlighted is a question for Ms. Lindbad. That said, you can't make a moratorium specific to a certain site. Um, and she's repeatedly said that you have to do a larger geographical area, have a purpose and which is, which is what the motion did. The, the actual resolution, it was a resolution, not an ordinance, correct? Resolution?
I believe it was.
Or was it an ordinance? I thought it was a resolution too. That resolution that we signed, which is the official document, what I read is just reading. Uh, the moratorium did not go into place on the day we voted to have a moratorium because that means nothing without a resolution that's posted to the public. So all we did on the first week is say we're gonna actually impose it the same way. When that resolution came out, I believe, uh, Ms. Lindbad did send it to prosecutor. I'm not sure if the clerk sent it to the prosecutor. But she's the one that actually drafted the words of the resolution, uh, which is the legal and binding document, not the statement I read.
So the moratorium didn't go into place when you voted for a moratorium?
Not according to the, the, uh, legal counsel, no.
That's a, that's good then.
So it goes into place when you actually have a document that's signed and posted to the public. Which was week two when the actual resolution was signed last week and that document was created by Ms. Lindbad.
So then I would say that, that personally, the only thing, because I'm not really worried about any solar companies coming in and trying to go after us on the procedure part because that would make it look bad in public. I'm more concerned about the actual resolution and whether it will have the desired effect with regards to, FSEC. And so my, my ask that we have the clerk word is.
I don't know that, I, I can't say that our prosecutor is an FSEC attorney or a land use attorney. It would be able to answer that question. I mean, I guess technically, if, if that's what the board wants to do is submit a legal question, if he feels like it's in his purview for him to answer, he can. And if he feels like it isn't, he would then recommend we seek outside counsel to ask the question. So I guess it doesn't hurt to ask.
That's the whole point I'm trying to make.
I don't know. I'm, I don't necessarily have a problem with it. Um, I'm not worried about where it stands with FSEC because I'm getting my FSEC information straight from the horse's mouth, which was FSEC. Um, which I actually went back and forth with an email. I mean, I can probably, if I had a little future, I could have the email for you in an hour, which will be out of here in an hour. So you get it next Tuesday. Where I, I specifically was asking FSEC these questions over the last year and a half in preparation for what-ifs. In, in, at first they're very guarded in how they want to answer the question, but then they eventually spell it out. And then it, where they stopped answering me is like, when I sent back the, okay, so to make this perfectly clear then, what you're saying is once the permit is in the FSEC, you follow the rules that are in place in the county the minute the permit dropped. But if the permit drops after the moratorium, you wait and find out what changes are made in the moratorium. And then those are the rules that take place. And that's when they stopped answering my.
So they didn't answer the question.
Well.
Not in right.
Well, they did in four different emails, different ways. When I put it all together, they put it together what I was trying to accomplish and stopped having dialogue. The other emails fully explain what I just said and that's the case. I was like, when does it become official? When do you have, because it's, um, their wording is, and it's like the newspaper ad that I read on why they put the Yakima one and, and went ahead with the Yakima one. It comes down to when the permit was first received or the project was first originated or whatever their terminology is. So I was questioning their definitions to make sure that yes, if you have the official moratorium, before the permit drops to them, they will sit out of it to see what you're gonna do. If you're gonna actually go forward and change things and make ordinances or do whatever, they're fine with waiting through the process. If your moratorium is like the last sheet you gave us, that's, oh, it's a two-year moratorium and we're not gonna do anything. We're just having a moratorium for the sake of a moratorium.
And I looked that up. They were, they were working on their stuff and going through it. I mean, Paul Jewell was definitely going through it. It just takes a lot longer than they had anticipated.
Well, FSEC does not, um, go against the county that's currently working and updating their plan. Uh, as long as there is a timeframe and you have goals and you can see movement, they will sit on the permit and wait for you to be done. Now, if, again, if you want to have legal counsel to surmise that and legal counsel can call FSEC and ask the question, I, I don't know that I oppose it because I. I I don't know that I oppose it because I don't think we're really gonna get anything, there's no, there's no there there.
Well, and I feel like. With some new information for me today, that Director Lindblad helped craft that resolution. That was sent to the prosecutor and he did review it. We would be recreating, going back to him, asking questions, he's obviously seen it. And I feel like our door is always open, I know my email's open and he does email. It is his job to keep an eye on things too and keep us safe. And I would have thought if there were a problem and we're two weeks out now, we would have heard from him. If he if he was worried about anything, I think he would be here and say, hey, wait, 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 I have to talk to you. I don't, I don't see. Again, bugging him to do more work, to look at some things that he's already seen and he hasn't reached out to us with problems. And then as far as our prosecutor. I have ultimate respect for him and the job he does and the advice he gives. But I have also seen other situations where in other counties, you're you are not. None of us are ever blocked from legal counsel if you need it and sometimes. Legal advice is just a legal opinion and if you're very, very uncomfortable, there is a way through WASC that you can. Get a second legal counsel, but what they do is coordinate with our prosecutor. And they would answer my question if I reached out to him. But they would also send it straight to the prosecutor and the other two commissioners so that we have. An open door and a very public process between all of us to work on that issue. So I don't think we have any lack of resources for legal review if we absolutely need it.
And I would agree and I would hope if. The prosecutors listening, if they see us going off the rails. With a document that's illegal, they bring it to our attention so we could remedy the situation, so. I would think he would as well because he doesn't want anything to do with it. I, again, I don't.
It's it's not whether this is not, whether it's legal or not, this is the interpretation on. Whether or not it accomplishes the goal that we stated out to do and whether or not it stops that.
Well, I guess technically if if potentially the moratorium doesn't stop a group from going to FSEC. And that's your argument to some degree, correct? The moratorium legally may not stop them. From going through FSEC and getting it permitted while we're doing our moratorium.
My statement is that based on what I brought forward, that. They will not stop a solar developer from going to FSEC and getting a land use consistency determination. Just based on a on a moratorium because they've ruled multiple times that a moratorium is not a land use regulation. And that is not what they do to create their consistency determination to process applications.
Okay, so if that was the case, that would be perfect for you. Because then the solar planet, solar stuff would go through and the moratorium wouldn't mean any of that.
Well, and I. You you made an assumption there. You made a very interesting assumption there. What is perfect for me, I've never said that I wanted to see it go through FSEC, I've never said that I wanted to see it move forward. I have purposely over this entire time done everything I can to make predetermined decisions. On projects that would hopefully go in front of us. Because when you do that, that's when you have to recuse yourself because this is a quasi judicial process. So I've never came out and said, I'm in favor of solar on Knight Road or Cypress Creek or anything else, so so you know. Had enough of that from one person. Making assumptions, so I would I would ask you to please not not put words in my mouth.
I will apologize.
One of my reasons, one of the biggest ones again is land use planning. And I think we all have a moot conversation here. We have documents on file that are anti moving forward. With large industrial solar. They are policies that were adopted and signed by our county commissioners in the past. They're they're old, but they're there and they're legal valid documents that we need. To pull out of those files, we need to sit with our prosecutor and legal counsel and say. Through good planning, what do we need to adjust? What do we need to wipe out? Where what do we need to build our futures so we can let them in? And I believe there would be a struggle if an application was laid down and I believe there'd be a struggle with FSEC. With those documents on our files because they are on record. And I think there are several points in our ordinances and policies that. Would be crisscrossed if we tried to move forward without adjusting them.
So, again, that's, I I agree that we need to look at those policies, look at everything and do that. What I'm speaking to is what I don't want to have happen, and this is what I don't want to see happen. Is is that we pass a moratorium, we go out there, we say we are blocking all projects from moving forward. FSEC, as Commissioner Christopher says, FSEC has to respect that moratorium. And this is what we say and we go through the moratorium hearing, we had the option and ability to ask legal counsel. On whether that would be successful or not. And then what happens, they go and they submit an application. And then and then FSEC decides, actually, yeah, we 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 do, we are gonna move forward on processing this. And what we've done is is we've walked away from pretty much all our local planning and everything and we've given it all to FSEC. On the presumption that that was the case and then we as a board will look really, really bad if that goes.
If that happens, I guess I lose my next election and I'll be happy to lose it.
But Jake, you made a point too in a statement that went through this conversation. That you said you don't anticipate anybody's gonna do that because they're gonna look bad to the public if they do. If they challenge our land use planning.
No, no, I said they would look bad if they came in and tried to use. Process and hired high priced attorneys because they all have attorneys on file. And use process to try to say we illegally passed the moratorium to get the moratorium voided. That's what I meant.
Right, but in the same way, I guess the answer is, okay. Legal review is a moratorium, doesn't have any legal standing. So a moratorium means nothing, so, okay, we'll still work on ordinances, which will take six months to a year. And now what? Cypress drops a permit to the county. And it.
I would.
Legally binding, so where are we? I mean, worst case scenario, we're no different with the moratorium or without, under your argument. So why not?
Remember, I mean, we, I would I would say we should all go back to twenty twenty one. February through March, watch those videos because we've had all these discussions. And then we had the discussions through the hearing on why we dropped the moratorium. And the reason and rationale was is is that we would always, always rather have. These companies go through our process than through FSEC.
I agree, but based on the information that I know from a professional very close to the industry. And Cypress Creek is they weren't gonna use us anyway, they were going to FSEC anyway, so. So much for local process. When when we have regulations that say it's a zero setback, you don't have to have one. Yes, I'd like to go through, have them go through the local because then the local, the planner could say five hundred feet. But why would they when they can go to FSEC and FSEC says, well, minimum zero? Make it zero. Why would they want to go through the local process when they know the local process is gonna be tougher than excess? FSEC, it might be cheaper than FSEC, but they get more of what they want with FSEC. It it's been reported to me they were going with FSEC either way, so. We're on our own there.
For me too, it's it's kind of a moral issue for my position. You know, the number one issue I heard throughout the whole campaign was solar, solar, solar and the problems. I'm standing up for what my constituents want at this point and that's good planning. Let's figure this out, let's have public meetings, let's let the public be involved and I'm giving that chance and if the solar company. Wants to disrespect. My obligation to the people and disrespect the people of this county and just go ahead and do it, then so be it, that's their bad.
They proved our point. And I would agree, I think that's my argument with this.
Rather than being a welcome partner in our county.
I don't believe that the public has had a chance to plan and and give its future. And and create its vision. I think they've been left out of the loop, so if we want to, oh yeah, well, we can have local planning. And that way we can make sure we can pick the setback. You just get stuck with solar panels on Knight Road, solar panels on Hocker and now new solar panels in Centerville. Congratulations, we had local planning. How did that work for ninety percent of the local residents' vision for the area? I I just, I feel we would be having a different discussion. If this plan was for white salmon or Husum or BZ. It wouldn't necessarily be Greg and Dell and Cherry and well, Cherry would probably still be there. It would probably be four or five different residents from over there, it's just solar is not gonna go over there, so. This is the, and I knew when I took office. This is the number one item in this area for the next twenty years. It is the most important item in this area for the next twenty years because it will shape. The future of the Goldendale Centerville Valley for a decade and. Is there people that are gonna be in favor of the solar projects? Absolutely, the leaseholders are in favor taxing entities. You start talking to the hospital or the EMS district or the fire district or the county. And of course, they're all in favor because hey, look, I get a bigger budget and I can buy what more fire trucks, ambulances, hospital beds. So they're all in favor, but the general public. Ninety percent absolutely opposed and I'm not going to in any way pull the moratorium because it doesn't work. And then have them what? Drop a permit the next week and us go whoops, I guess Jake was wrong. I guess I was right at the first time and now I need to resign because of incompetence. So I will, I would rather just keep the moratorium on and in place and. With my legal opinion of it being valid. And if Cypress wants to hire high priced attorneys to say that it is invalid, then they can. Feel free.
Again, that is not the question I was posing for the legal opinion. I think if, I've never, never seen a disagreement over getting legal opinion. The scope of the legal opinion is whether or not the moratorium. Will be held up in FSEC. As to whether FSEC will say that is a land use planning document or not. And whether or not they can make a determination of land use consistency with that.
Okay, so what if the answer is, yes, the moratorium will hold? Nothing changes than the way it is today, right now currently, right?
Then then we walk into the moratorium saying, look, we've stopped it, we've put a hold on it. And then that has one set of directions for the conversation.
What happens if the legal opinion is no, the moratorium doesn't mean anything and they can still go through FSEC?
Well, if that's the case, then I think we need to let the public know in a transparent manner that what our decision was was for the most part. It was it was more feel good than having any effect.
And in a way, that's for me, thinking in the legal world. Putting our prosecutor directly on the hot seat. He has given us his opinion through that resolution in approving the language in the resolution that supports. The moratorium and if we put him on the hot seat to to double down. Anybody can sue for anything in this world and you know that. And it's going to put him directly in the fire of challenging and being on the forefront of challenging that. Rather than saying he supports us, he supports the route we're going and let water go where it goes and we do our good job. And we move through this, if the solar companies are gonna take that route and be what you say they could be. They're gonna do it anyhow and. Taking that and putting him to double down on what he's already supported. I'm not in favor of that.
I think he's just, he's just approved it as to form like he does the other document.
He did not approve it to form?
It probably is worded closely after the one we did two years ago. I let's, let's go this way. If is that the the sole legal question is, just to be perfectly clear. Does this moratorium hold water with FSEC and does it stop FSEC from granting permit acceptance?
The land use consistency determination.
Okay, if you want to word that out to our clerk as she takes a note. I would, depending on how that's worded, I will agree with a legal. A legal finding, if you want to read it out to her so she writes it down accordingly.
I can write something up right now, sir. I mean, I think he's hopefully listened.
I just, I don't know, like, on this one, I I guess part of it is not me being defensive, part of it is just me not wanting to waste his time. And I think this is based on my conversations with FSEC, a waste of his time. But I'll let him tell us that. While you're working on that, what else do we have? Word pending or issues to be determined? Before we logged off today, I was gonna say bye to everybody online unless they wanted to stick around. For the last like ten minutes of our meeting to hear me explain to you how to go on and look at legislative bills and all that kind of stuff. We'll keep it open and on Zoom, so they know we're not talking about anything weird, but it'll be pretty boring for them for the last ten minutes of the day.
If we need a little bit of time, I have kind of a happy update report, if that's appropriate to do it now. Can I, can I do it in this session? Okay, being part of the new boards, last week I visited with. The Southwest Washington Council on Aging and Disabilities and it's going to be one of my very favorite boards. I love it. They do such good work for Medicare, Medicaid. Seniors and disabilities and. I'm gonna prepare something and bring it back next week, but I just really think we all need to really say a thanks to Sharon Carter. Down in our senior services and a thanks to our county for over the years. There are counties, some very big ones that don't even have a senior services. And the Southwest Washington Board actually tries to field all of their calls and take care of them. And they sent me a list that I have to prepare for next week to give to you. That showed in twenty twenty two, how many calls we took from seniors, how many bus rides we gave to seniors, how many seniors we fed. How many doctor appointments we helped them attend. And they said Clickitack County ranks pretty much number one in the whole state. For the money we apply of our own money plus for the services we give our seniors. So I thought that was a pretty good pat on the back for.
That's a pretty good packet on the back for our predecessors too, for what they built.
Yes.
And and hand delivered to us, I wouldn't say that's, you know, this board or the last two years that we had a whole lot of doing and building it. But yes, it's, it's, I I would kind of second that, big, yeah.
Yeah.
Big kudos to that.
Okay, you like my draft?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, the board would like a legal opinion on whether or not the resolution passed by the B O C C creating a moratorium. Is considered a land use determination on based on the previous findings of FSEC and if the moratorium will. And if the moratorium will put a hold on FSEC for making a determination of land use consistency.
I just don't know how that that phrased in that way is in his wheelhouse. Without being a land use attorney or a judge that would rule on it. I don't mind submitting it, but I don't, I wouldn't be shocked if you don't get an answer.
I don't mind submitting the. Resolution and the things we've worked on to him in full, but to pigeonhole him into that land use determination language. I'm not in favor of.
That's, as I said, I think you're gonna get an answer back that says I'm not a judge, I can't answer that question.
So the reason.
It's it's cornering him and pigeonholing him on giving us a legal determination on how a court would rule. And no attorney can tell you how a court would rule. But I mean, if I, if you want to submit it, I'm, I I would submit it and.
The reason, the reason I bring this up is is that I've had conversations with at least one of our department heads that have read it the same. The reason, the reason I bring this up is, is that I've had conversations with at least one of our department heads that have read it the same as me. And that's why I think it would be good for us to be able to walk in to the hearing to be able to say, based on not our opinion, but based on someone with a law degree's opinion, this is, this is the likely outcome and effect of our decisions. I fear that no matter what, even if we didn't have a moratorium in place now, um, based on the fact, fact of a moratorium that, that any solar developers would go through FSAC anyways, because they probably don't have a whole lot of faith in, in the county process, considering we've passed two moratoriums and.
Well, the, you know what the reason for the moratorium is, right? It's because the commissioners don't have a lot of faith in the county process either.
I'm sorry you feel that way, sir.
The reason I'm in this chair is because I ran for office because I don't believe the citizens' voices have been heard. See, the only reason I'm sitting here. Uh, so yeah, I still believe that. Uh, in, in honesty, whichever ruling the prosecutor gives on this, it doesn't matter to me. Um, I will still push to move forward to get the citizens' voices heard and create ordinances, regulations and site-specific locations. Um, and if solar gets to get in any way regardless of doing that, then at least I tried.
So I would bring up what I brought up again last year or last, sorry, last week, I believe. It all blends together now. Uh, the question of if that is the direction of the board, why would we wait until the hearing on the moratorium on whether or not we direct staff as well as the planning commission to move forward with creating a solar ordinance? Why would we not just say it now?
Because I believe I'm, have to follow the rules of Washington State Code on moratoriums and it says you have to have a hearing. So we're going to go through the procedural sequence.
That's only on the moratorium.
Do.
But that is, that is not on the basis of whether or not we move forward with a solar ordinance. You can do that outside of the hearing for the moratorium.
There's no way we can create that ordinance or even think about it to craft it unless we have public involvement. I'm sure there's some huge public involvement laws that I haven't investigated yet, but I think we're probably really errant on those on this subject. And I've been involved in a couple of subjects that were developed in the dark of night without public participation and it got really ugly.
So I, I mean, yes, the easy answer would be directing staff to, uh, pop out fifteen ordinances that we can maybe throw in some ordinances and maybe make everybody happy and it's over and you have one public hearing and it's gone. Uh, but does that allow the public to weigh in on, um, site-specific locations based on area population density? Does that, does that allow for a public process, which is what the public are demanding? Or are we just going to throw them a bone and then here's a six thousand acre solar farm in your backyard?
And then we've made a mistake in the ordinance.
And I deserve to resign for incompetence.
So again, what I'm saying is, is we would direct staff and the planning commission, which is a public process, to move forward with the drafting of a solar ordinance.
I get that and I can see where you're going, but having the knowledge I have, the planning commission isn't going to do anything for the next couple, two, three, four weeks anyway. Uh, because they need new members seated, they need new members appointed and they need retrained. So moving today to move forward with the planning commission doesn't really get us anywhere because they can't move forward anyway. Uh, so we might as well have our hearing.
Once again, if we move forward like that, we become basically dictators. We're dictating to our public again that you don't have a voice and we're moving forward and we're going to create the ordinance. And that's how they'll see it.
That's, I was saying, we send it to the planning commission to work through the public process that's enshrined in law in order to pass or create a solar ordinance. That is, that is your overall end goal. If that is your overall end goal, we can do that separate from the moratorium. So I don't see, when you have your hearing on the moratorium, you're going to hear from people that are going to say, we want to see a solar mortgage or a solar ordinance. And that's what you're going to hear. What I'm saying is, is if we just direct staff to go do it, we're getting a two to three month jump ahead of the rest of it.
Potentially, if, uh, if you want to have a conversation with Moshe and she feels that we can legally do that and she gives us the guidance that we could just move forward. I mean, I'm sure we'd still have to have our public hearing on whether we were moving forward with the moratorium.
And I'm, I'm opposed.
Separate then.
Yeah, I'm two different things. So I'm opposed to working that way because, um, process is process and moving forward to create that ordinance in a situation where the board is trying to work on it before we get through some public time where they can direct and say to me, I want an ordinance. I haven't heard the larger public say that. We've been through a very blind time where we have our group working with us that comes in that doesn't want it. But I want to know who else out there needs their voice heard. And I want to hear from them. Yeah, you should be doing an ordinance. Or what if we get a room full of people that says, you know, just do what you want. We don't care.
What if the public doesn't show up?
I serve the public.
To our hearing like they didn't show up last time. And we get twenty-three people testify. Maybe a moratorium ends.
I, I thought you made it very clear that this is the most important thing you heard on your campaign and you met with, you know, thousands of people.
Me.
No, no, Lori said that just a little bit ago. And so I would say that if what you heard during your campaign is, is that from everyone you talked to is they want to have solar ordinances and that's the direction that, that the people want to go, then us sitting here saying we would direct staff to go do exactly that, I don't see what process there is that you're saying we're trying to circumvent here. I'm not trying to pull one over on anyone's eyes. I'm trying to give us the direction that it sounds like both of my seatmates would like to go.
Um, I think I would invite you to somehow, this is just a estimate, whatever. If you set yourself up in a public setting and allowed the people to come to you and they knew you were going to be there and you asked these questions, you would hear from them. We want some public meetings. That's what you would hear. We want our voice heard. And, um, I'm not in favor of bypassing that small amount of process that they've been asking for. So we can get into the meat of it, get into the good planning and know that we've honored the people and allowed them to have their time.
So where are we going to hold this, these meetings at? Because it's exactly the process that I was trying to speak to.
I think the definition will come out of when we have our hearing downstairs. And as they collect documentation, that will drive. Do we need public, more public meetings? Do they need more time to speak? That has happened on every, every issue I've ever worked on, Wild and Scenic Rivers, Rails to Trails, um, Columbia Gorge Commission. Each meeting gathered and took us to, do we have enough now? Have we collected enough data? Do we need to move on to the next step? And you can identify those steps to them in that meeting. And you can say, where are we now? What do we need? What do you want us to move to? Here's where we can move next. Which if they're satisfied with that public hearing downstairs and they feel they got comment in and the comments collected that great, move on now to planning commission, let's get this ordinance going. Or let's talk to planning commission about their advice of which direction we need to go. I think that would totally set you on that process and satisfy the need for public involvement.
And I think having the attorney doing the legal review that you're asking for is pretty much doing the work of the solar companies for them. Uh, so they don't have to be the bad guy to try to challenge it. Uh, they can, they can use our own against us, but I, I will submit to the legal review question that you asked and I, because I don't want to refuse anybody legal. Um, if it has to come to the board, because I might someday want a legal opinion and I would hope, um, even if people disagree with my opinion, uh, that they can support me having counsel. Um, so with that, I, I'm going to agree with you on the legal opinion, but I'm not going to agree with you on the speeding up of the process. Um, you're, you're, you've constantly said through the C U P, trust the process, trust the process. Well, let's trust the process.
I would agree to legal review. I agree. We all deserve that whenever we need it and I'm thankful that our prosecutor has an open door.
Yes.
Um, and I'm thankful he listens in and I feel like he would come if there was a problem. Um, and I don't mind at all saying I don't ever want to block Jake from asking for legal counsel from him. But I'm not in favor of my, uh, request being put on that statement is drafted. If that's something Jake needs answered, that's fine and he's welcome to bring it back to the board and discuss it with us. But that's not a question I'm asking my prosecutor.
I agree.
But what do you mean?
This is, this is going to be.
Question back or?
No.
Come back and discuss what you found.
Essentially, we're signing off on, since you have to have the boards, you know, for legal opinion. I'm not going to get into that. We're signing off that yes, let's get the legal opinion, but this is your question. Uh, and when you get the answer, you can fill us in on what it is.
I would be happy to, of course.
That's, that's all I think that was correct.
Yes.
Um, anything else on that matter? Anything else on any matter other than?
Thank you all.
Yep. Um.
I take. I'll print it out for you.
Any, um, anything by anybody, any staff or anybody online have anything for us before we close? Okay, not hearing anything. Um, with that, you're, you're welcome to be in the room. You're welcome to leave the room. Uh, you're welcome to stay on Zoom. You're welcome to not stay on Zoom. We're going to spend about ten minutes just um, having general boring discussions about how to log into the state's website to see when the legislature is going to start hearing bills and, uh, how to sign up to testify for Ms. Zoller so she can testify on, on different bills that are going through the legislature this year. So you may or may not be able to hear us if we're in front of a microphone, but we're not doing anything weird. We just cannot have the discussion outside of this room. So we're going to stay in for about five minutes or so while we do that. Yep.
Uh, could we turn the recording off as your, as your teacher?
Technically we could.
I mean.
I mean, um, no, let's leave it on. Cause I don't want Greg to come back or sorry for using a name. My bad. I apologize to Greg. I don't want anybody to come back later thinking we were having a private behind closed door meeting and talking about something fishy that we shouldn't have been talking about. So let's, let's just.
Oh, there's only nineteen.
Let's just, yep, open and transparent.
See how slow Mrs. Zoller is with tech.
Um, I would just Google search Washington House Bill. What was that bill number you had earlier?
Two oh six seven was something. That must be older.
Um, that's my, that's my, I have it right here. Twelve sixteen. And then click the first link there. All right. Now the main kicker is you look at the year. So this is the same bill, but it's a different year. So you've got to change the year to twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three or twenty-three, twenty-four, sorry. Get you into the correct bill. Okay, now it kind of tells you the bill if you, in the sponsors of the bill.
Okay.
And that heading of the bill. And if you scroll down and you can see a substitute companion bill, S B is Senate bill. H B is House bill. Um, if you scroll down, you'll see document. Oh, you, you have a funny scroller.
I know, it's.
Um, so you can open the original bill and read the whole thing.
It's my dinosaur.
Your temporary dinosaur. And I always got to make it bigger, bigger because my own person eyes can't read it. Um, actually, I'm going to have you go back page. On that, I want you to right-click on original bill, not left-click. And hit open in a new tab so you don't lose your main page. Yeah. So now it's over there in that tab. If you don't lose your main page. So you can read the bill.
Okay.
And then go, oh crap, when did they testify? And go back and click the old link. And find out testimony times are available to, uh.
Available videos.
So that's where it's going to be housed. And if they have a sign-in for testimony, you can click on that date, click on that thing right there. And it should have you, um, provide a link, which again, you can do and open in new video.
That's not it.
Yeah, I did. No, that is, that is the right place. Scroll down and see if they have a, where you can register. To testify, they might, up in there. I don't know why I'm hot today. Yeah, I was going to say I had to climb under the desk and turn the fan on. There's usually. Oh, maybe it's uncommon on this bill over on the right. No, that's just where you would end. So yes, on the original title thing here, if you want to comment on it, just say you're opposed or in favor or whatever. Then you just open that comment thing that's there and you support, oppose, neutral.
Okay.
And send your, this is just written comment. Uh, if you want to drop your comment for that, but there should be a link to be able to testify.
And you can get notifications of how it's moving.
Right. Or text message notifications as well. So it's in the house and it's in committee. Cause I just take you to the website. There's usually, uh.
A different way to comment?
You turn to register for testimony. There was a link on me.
Maybe it's not that formal process.
Well, maybe, well, that's just it. Maybe it's just going to committee, but it's not actually open for testimony. Uh, maybe it's not a public hearing. It's just committee. And then when it is a public hearing, then there would be a link somewhere on here where you can click and give your name to testify. And then when they, when you go to that YouTube TV link.
Yeah.
Um, at the appointed time, they kind of mentioned the next three people that are going to testify and in what order.
Okay.
Uh, and then they, they would call your name.
So they'll probably add that later.
Yeah, it's somewhere in here when they actually go have, you'll be able to see them talking during this. But that's public hearing. There's got to be citizen comment. It's a public hearing. So I don't. And twelve sixteen. Remote testimony available.
I think it might be they're working on.
Yeah, that's coming. That's, that's when the day of the testimony.
Okay.
That will be the, that's their Zoom.
Okay.
We're back on the main page under materials and I'll open that in a link too, so I don't have too many things. This is what that energy committee is going to be hearing that day and it doesn't necessarily mean it's in this order. These are the things they are going to talk about in executive sessions. Just because this thing's listed first, they may not hear it first. They might hear it last.
Yes.
Uh, but it, it does say remote testimony available, but it doesn't have a link to sign up to testify. And that's what I don't understand. Interesting. I don't know on that one, my research. They might have changed it, but it said it was available for remote testimony. So maybe they're just going to ask, is anybody here to testify and wait for somebody to raise their hand? During COVID and Zoom, they, they wanted the list ahead of time. Um, they still, I think, took comments from people who didn't, names weren't on the list. But if your name is on the list, you're assured. And then when you go to testify, make sure you have your prepared testimony in a thirty-second block, a one-minute block, a two-minute block. Because you never know until you're going to start to testify how long they're going to give you. a one-minute block, a two-minute block, because you never know until you're going to start testify how long they're going to give you.
So you're talking about you'd be doing that if you were on Zoom with them on this?
Right. If you went to testify, then you would schedule the testify, then you're going over here to this thing.
Yep.
And that's where you would, sorry, that's where they would be and you would meet them and you would click into it just like a Zoom.
Okay.
And mute yourself and everything else. And then when they called your name, you unmute yourself and you give your testimony.
Coming soon, this event.
This event may be coming live or, yeah, this, this is just that public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah. So, but you never know if they're going to give you a 30 seconds or a minute or two minutes or whatever. So if you plan some three-minute speech and then come to find out you get one minute, you're screwed. So anytime you're doing public comment with them, I always have a one-minute.
Yeah, did have a-
Ready. And then you'll know when they started how long you get and then you pull out that one.
Okay.
And, and so, but that'll, that'll do it. And then obviously if there's something, if you're going through the list of, um, bills and something piques your curiosity, that's when we need to have the discussion about the bill and bring it to our attention like he did this one. So we can go home and look at this bill and do our homework and have discussions next week to see whether we want to actually come out in support or opposition, or if we want to just stay neutral and monitor it, or if we want to, um, kick it over to Zach, our lobbyist to be a significant, uh, piece of legislation that we want to make sure we get updates on. Kind of a scenario. And then same deal, you can go through that bill list that I emailed. Just open it in a Word document.
Okay.
I didn't do it. Did you look at that? The one that Lee sent out?
Yes.
Which is the hot sheet?
Yes. That's daunting.
I opened it wrong and so it, I just clicked on the link. So it did this, but after page three, it started doing this. And it's like, oh my God, that's horrible.
Yeah. I'll go back and look at mine and get it. I want to print it.
What did I do? I opened it as. Oh, I did. I opened it to a new tab, which opens it in a Word document. And then it didn't do that. Then it was all broken this way, which is correct.
So I'll be sure to-
So I had it the wrong way. So yeah, that's why I showed you they're opening a new tab.
Yeah.
And then it won't, the formatting isn't all screwed up. But then ideally look through this, whether it's paper or whatever. If you see something that's interesting that we might want to do, make a note of it. Advise us on that bill the next week so we can go look at it. Cause there'll be 3,000 of these things. So if, you know, we're going to have our little handful that we're going to try to, you know, get involved with, but, and then look at those and try to do your homework for the next week. But on, on the ones that we deem important to either you or important to the county. Anything else or is that a good enough explanation to get you on?
I'm good. And you know, as I use it, I'll become more familiar. I'll be good.
Yep.
I have to kind of do it all the time and then I got it down.
Yep. It's, it's all new. And that's the problem with Open Public Meetings Act is I don't get to explain all this outside of this room. So unfortunately for our staff, they had to sit through that for 10 minutes. With that, if there's Commissioner Anderson's on his little comfort break. So, uh, if there's nothing else for the good of the order, I would take a motion to adjourn, uh, the meeting today.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I will step down and second the motion. Uh, the motion is second, all those in favor of adjourning the meeting today, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Uh, let the record note Commissioner Anderson was outside of the room.